Go ahead and open the mini retreat for the city council, roll call.
Mayor Calvin, council member Fagerly, Meskey, Chuantas, Davis, Alvarado, Osmis, Eric Plowman, Nelson. Eight, seven eyes, or seven present, two absent, sorry.
Okay, and both of the people absent are approved absences. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance as well, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible and just as one.
We have three items that we are going to be discussing this evening. One is the general discussion on local option sales tax projects. The second item is general discussion on the city hall community center project. And the other one is the committee, committee structure discussion. First off, we'll start with the local option sales tax projects. And I'll turn it over to our city administrator, Mr. Grammets, for introductions. And then if you would just hand it off to staff as appropriate.
I will do so, Mayor. Mayor and city council members, as stated earlier, we have three items. The general discussion on the local option sales tax projects. I'm going to start off with the city engineer, then go on to the park and rec director. And then the park and rec director and myself will fill in on the, on the three projects that have been initiated, rec, rec event center at Swanson Field and rec fields. So if that is probably the easiest way to go about it is just have Sean come up to the mic and do an update on the storm water progress.
Thanks, Brian. Council members, the, members of the council, at any time, kind of stop me, ask questions, whatever. I mean, if it's kind of a work session type casual, we can, we can kind of do it that way. I think what I'll do is kind of discuss what we did with the stormwater committee and how I see it looking from here on out, as well as I've got a draft update to date on the stormwater projects as they pertain to the stormwater or to task force and the local option sales tax. The committee met back in August, for the last time we met was back in August, when we did a priority, or priorities of the, of the stormwater projects that were presented to them. The priority listing, as was decided by the committee, was east side drainage, which was affectionately called Cambridge, was called Landmark, it was called Kuzman, it was called a bunch of different things before it, we settled on the east side drainage. Trying to give the impression, and because it is more of a regional and a city project rather than a private individual project. So that would be the first priority from the task force, I'm sorry, from the committee structure. Second would be Garfield and what we're affectionately calling Molly Pond. It's some park pond areas. Garfield Park was, some of you might remember years ago when we did the, we had a full design in Kennedy Ohio and 10th area was where Garfield. And we had it designed and ready to go. And so it would not be hard to re-revamp that, that project. Molly Pond is kind of a personal name we put on one. Yes, sir.
I believe councilman Nelson has a question.
Yes.
Just a question, with what land does the city own there?
For the Garfield one?
Yeah.
We don't own any, no land we own. That's all, that's school.
Okay.
And, and you'll see that on a couple of these, that's a good point. There's two or three of these projects that is, that is not city-owned property, and which obviously will come into play if that project continues through and continues to be built. Whether we purchase or bypass that project altogether. The, the other portion of that one is Molly Pond. It's, it's a, just a pet name for it, if you will, but it's a, it's a pond on property that is owned by the city, and that's, that's a good point to state on each of these. This project, or this pond would be at the head end of, I think it's ditch three or branch three. It's at the north end of the old wastewater treatment and landfill area. So outside of where we can't dig, we would put a pond there to head into that ditch in order for backwater effects, so that it doesn't end up in people's driveways, front yards, backyards, and things of that nature. There has not been any design to date on the, on these other projects. So whether we move a playground or do it in, you know, what we do at their point, we haven't got to that point yet. Yes, sir?
Oh, thank you. I, Garfield is one project, Molly Pond is one project.
Correct, but, but I put them as one item because the size and Garfield's already designed, I figured we could probably do them under one project, if you will. The size of this Molly Pond is, is not very big, and I think we could combine that with any of, any of the following projects that I'm, that I'll mention to you. Any other questions on those so far? Here's what I'm thinking, if you guys want to do something different, let me know. But I can give you this priority list, and then I can go back and give you the update on the east side, if that sounds sufficient to everybody. Southeast Pond, you've probably heard this one called Menards Area Pond. You've probably heard it called a bunch of different things. I'm trying to do more general areas instead of naming specific businesses, so that we don't get people fired up and riled up about something that may not happen as, as they see it in their, in their mind. So this would be a relief pond that's on the south end of town. And this would help out the issues we've had in the past with Schwenkys, with Super Eight, with Menards. And so that area there would, would be helped with this, with this third priority. Voss Park. I think we're all very familiar with Voss Park and how it ponds and stays that way most of the year. And so we would have to, whether the pond takes a different shape, or whether it, you know, whether we haul in material to, to make the footprint smaller and salvage some of the, the park, again, remains to be seen. And one thought so far would be to run the stormwater from Voss Park due south into the pond that is at the north end of Industrial Park. Okay, so where the design and the trickiness comes in is you're crossing a highway and a railroad, and now a new highway. And so we've got some, some issues to take care of there. The, the next priority would be Kennedy Area Pond. And again, back to councilmember Nelson's question earlier, Kennedy, of course, we do not own, that would be school-owned property as well, which adds another little issue, potential issue with these, with these projects. Some of you may recall Kennedy Area was thought of earlier, years ago, about being an area behind the stadium that we could lower and put a pond in until they did the soil borings and found that the soil, the groundwater is about three feet below the surface. So it doesn't do us much good to dig a pond when there's already water that close to the surface. So for this one to work, it would have to be in a different location. One potential idea that's been thrown out would be the northwest intersection, or northwest corner of the intersection of 7th and Wilmer Avenue. And where the soccer field is, if you potentially lower the entire soccer field, or put drainage structures under the entire soccer field. And so, again, large project, it moved down the list as far as priorities. The, the potential, as you may, you may realize, as we get to the bottom of the list, we may run out of sales tax funds before we get to full projects anyway. And so the committee knew this, we went into this knowing that fact. And so that's when they started prioritizing these projects in this, in this way. What I see happening as far as a committee goes now is kind of an as needed. And that was kind of discussed earlier when we started making committees for all the projects. And as these projects continue, and as we progress, and as there's updates to be had, then I can call a committee meeting and update the committee, who in turn can, can update the entire council and the sales tax committee. So that's the priorities has, has been set by the, by the committee to date. Any questions specifically on priorities? And then I can go into a little bit more detail of, of what the southeast, or what the east side pond improvements have, have done.
Then go ahead. Okay, thank you, Sean. When we went on that tour, I know that what you're referring to is southeast pond by Menards.
Right.
I believe there were some comments made about the county even looking at some projects that are outside of the city limit there. So is that something we would be working in conjunction with to, for a long-term view of the southeast side there? Because I think there was also a conversation about where the ball field is on the land that we own there. So I don't know if there's anything else you can share or expand on with your thoughts?
You know, yeah, we've, we've, some of these I've, I have run by the county and county engineer, and of course, some of them have came up when he was sitting in my seat. So definitely he's been involved in these projects, and we can, that one specifically, you're right, we can combine, potentially combine efforts with the county. It gets a little tricky because it puts the pond somewhere near where the watershed break is, you know, whether water would go to Grass Lake, or whether it'd go to Hawk Creek. And so we'd have to figure some of those items out, whether we even want to tackle that, about switching watersheds. I've always been on the no side of that fence. And so we'd have to, yeah, figure that out. But he's also got, the county's also done some other work in there to do some, some swales that are outside city limits for overflow and things of that nature. So it would, it would be a joint effort.
If I may ask one more, the Grass Lake project, I know that the county's still not done with that, correct? But will this year tell us if we're going to get some relief for the city of Wilmer from that Grass Lake project? Or is that still another year or so down the road?
You know, I think, I think each year that they expand that project, we will see some relief. Again, as I've mentioned before, on paper, not much relief. But I think in reality, I think we do see some, and think we already have with the, when they re, when they relocated Peach Creek, I think, is the name of that one. And so when they relocated that, it sent all that water directly to Grass Lake instead of through town. And so while the backwater elevation, again, on paper, doesn't seem to affect us or, or help us much, I think by just the nature of that water not going through town, I think, has drastically helped already.
I thought of one more, if I may.
Sure.
I think we had this conversation at public works committee meeting about Voss Park, and whether there was something we should be doing now while the construction is going on. And I think it was indicated that we needed to wait, but that, that we were working on what needed to be done to go underneath. Is that correct? Or is this just kind of, since it's so far down the list, I'm just curious, because it sounded like that one was something that perhaps could have a faster fix to it, knowing how the pipes are and that goes underneath the cemetery, et cetera.
Yep, that, that portion of it, we did do with this project. In fact, that covert is already under the, what will be the new Highway 12. And so there's a covert there. If the design of, the best design, when we get to Voss Park, still uses it, great. If it doesn't, it'll be there for something else. But yes, we, we did that with this project while, when they were putting the roundabout in. We had them go ahead and put that, that stormwater pipe or casing is what this one was, under a section of the new, a new highway that's west of the, the new roundabout. So it's there, we can tie onto it. If the elevations work, great. If they don't, then we'll do something different. But Mendat's always been great to work with if we need to bore it. We can bore it at grade if we need to at that point. And Mendat's not been, not been an issue to deal with.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So talking about Menards, I thought there was discussion one time, it might be better to buy land around Home Depot and flow that way?
So that was, that discussion came from me, because the original plan or the original concept, if you will, was Menards Area Pond. And part of that was, that's the head end of the ditch, so that if water backed up to the west of that far, then you could have a pond. You know, there was even talk, well, maybe we switch property with some MUC property that owns, that they bought from, for a potential substation, that's not going to happen. And, you know, we own that park there, maybe we extend the park property. So there's been a lot of discussion that's happened. And then I brought up, well, let's put the pond closer to where the backup starts, so that it doesn't get as far as the businesses that I named earlier. Again, it's all concept. And so where it ends up, I'm not entirely sure yet. We haven't gotten near that far yet. But yeah, that was same project. It'll be one, probably one place or the other. I doubt it'll be both, might be. Maybe we extend, expand the ditch and put a path along it or something. I mean, there's, there's all kinds of things we can do at that point.
Because I know there is property for sale there now.
Right behind Menards?
Home Depot.
Yes, yep. And some of that is, is developable, and some is not. And so, yep, we have, we'd have to look into all that. And, and that, back to councilmember Nelson's question, you know, we do not own that property currently for that project, but, but that would be an option as well.
But if you have a willing seller, that's better than someone that's going to fight you for it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And then what has changed with the school? They denied us Kennedy and Garfield before, so why do you think they would approve something now?
I'm not guaranteeing they will. My understanding was that the school did not deny us Kennedy, that the soil borings kind of pushed us away from that particular project. And Garfield, my understanding was that that was more residential-driven, resident-driven than school-driven. I could be wrong, and if I am, then that's fine. But my understanding on Garfield is it was ready to go, and then the residents spoke out against it, and then was, was pulled from the, from the docket at that point.
And I know there was a lot of residents that was opposed to it by Kennedy, too.
Yep, yep. And, and we'd still have, you know, on any of these ponds, you're, you're going to potentially have residents that are against it. And that's, I mean, that's just kind of the nature of adding a pond and, and there. The concept that it, it would appear the water is worse if you're, if it's in a pond than it is, you know, that backs up occasionally. And so we'd have some education to do on those things as well.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so what I would do really quick is kind of go through a couple notes that I've highlighted. I won't go through the whole six pages here that I've got of the draft copy of this first phase that we've, we've completed on the, on the east side drainage. East side drainage, if, as you, as you recall, some of the gory details, the estimates came back after the design, and there were way too much for me to feel comfortable in proposing that we spend that much. And so we went back to the drawing board, and this was all last summer, and redesigned and redid some things. But what I highlighted here was due to the pipe alignment through fully developed backyards, construction constraints, and potential easements required, that option became unfeasible. And so I, like I say, didn't feel comfortable even presenting that as a, that I would propose or recommend it doing that project at the cost that came in, came up with that full design. So the good news is, we had some of the preliminary design work. The bad news is that we were kind of back to the drawing board on exactly what was going to happen with that, with that project. So that being said, we, the bottom, or the ultimate goal was to completely remove any what would be considered water from public property that currently goes into the Cambridge Pond, and have a separate outfall for the public water, if you will. That's really dumbed down, if you will, of actually what happens. But we've got the first phase of that completed. And so by doing that, we've eliminated water going into the Cambridge Pond from four separate catch basins, two sets of catch basins, two separate sets of catch basins. We've eliminated some water that goes into that pond, and we've directed it to an existing pipe that will be second phase to add capacity to that pipe. Whether that is a second pipe or upsize the existing one. Currently, the estimates show a second parallel pipe that would handle just the city water would be the, would be the best way and the most economical way to go. And so the plan right now would be to do that next phase, next construction season. And then if we can get that done, we'll be done with that first priority on that list of that east side drainage. Any specific questions? I've got some, like I say, what I think are pretty impressive maps, but I can show you anytime. I don't need to geek out with everybody every time, so. Any questions specifically with that particular project? Councilmember Meskey?
I'm just looking at, we've been talking about stormwater retention for a long time, before the local option sales tax was around. Remember, we're the Western Interceptor on other plans. Many of them that you've highlighted here, we've talked about them before. They have costs associated with them. And I remember some of these, you thought we'd get more bang for the buck than not. And I'm assuming that they're kind of prioritized like that. Question for you is, we only have a finite amount of resources that are going to be coming in through local option sales tax. That was probably some costs were prohibiting us from doing many of these other things, or whether they would have a huge impact.
Right.
Where do you see the future here? Because I think local option sales tax was supposed to sort of augment a plan we already have. How do you see that happening? Are we going to continue to have some city dollars go into this? Are we relying solely on local option sales tax dollars?
You know, I've got, I think you're exactly right. The plan that was put together shortly before I got here, I had some large and small projects in it. Everybody calls it the bar report, bar engineering put that together, right? We've put, we've done with local dollars, with city, city budget, we've done some of the smaller projects. Some of these, these are some of the larger projects, that we were waiting for a funding source. Well, for this set of projects, this is the funding source. When we get done with these, when we run out of the sales tax dollars, because you're right, we're set at $7 million for stormwater projects. When we get done with that $7 million, we'll likely have additional large projects we need to do. We'll have to figure something out at that point on how to get those extra dollars, whether that is grants, whether that's a future sales tax, you know, what, 20 years from now, because this one goes for 13 or whatever. We'll have to figure that out. That in, in conjunction with, I've started a stormwater budget, separate budget that I deal with and manage. And that has additional local dollars in it for smaller projects, for, you know, your catch basin repairs that happen every year, things of that nature, that, that we can continue to look at each, on, each, each year for, for certain projects.
And this, this may be the specific one, and you don't have to get into the exact amounts, but for those five that you've indicated here, including the S side, east side drainage, you say it's going to be close. Do you, as you sit here today, do you think we have enough coming in through local, local option sales tax to cover these projects? Are we going to be pretty sure? I know it's crystal ball.
We're going to be close.
Close?
We're going to be close.
All right.
I can, today's dollars, I could get you a little, you know, a little better idea. Again, if, if the last ones on the list are not for four or five years, that's tough to tell, but I could get you in today's dollars, what I think it'll be. I, I don't have that in front of me right now.
Sure, thank you.
Just a follow-up question to that. Did it not, in the local option sales tax, allow us to update our stormwater plan? I mean, would it be smart, as we get a few of these things off the table, to look at a long-term stormwater plan before we do these and then say, okay, we're out of money, what are we going to do next? So, or is, or did I misunderstand your?
So the way I, I've, I've asked our attorney this a number of times, and the way the legislate, legislation is written, is this is for construction. And so the sales tax dollars won't allow us to do a plan. That being said, I can use my, as I mentioned, the stormwater fund that I've set up within the budget to do the, do a plan or an updated plan. What I'm going off of for these construction projects was off of the last plan. And you're absolutely right. At some point, especially as we start checking some ways off the list, we need to update that. And so that would be in a future CIP listing or proposal, that, that we can pull that from, from local budget to do an updated plan.
Thank you.
Other questions about stormwater? Stormwater in general? All iced up, no? Yes, sir?
I'm, I'm, I'm just going to voice, voice my concern about the, my constituents around Garfield. I'm expecting that there's going to be pushback. So you're just...
You, too.
I'm just, so you're prepared, that's, that's, that's real.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
When we went on the tour, you shared some information that I hadn't heard about, heard before, though, about... heard before though, about the water table and where the water flows and, and kinda I think why you think both that Kennedy area and Garfield, um, the issues with where the water table is and those things. And so have we looked at other options of, of land or, um, cause I know you talked about when it backed up and I don't know if you want to share any of that, or what other solutions do we have to that area?
Sure. You know, in an already developed area, you run out of solutions very fast. Um, the fact that we have some of these, you know, sporting fields, parking lots, some of those areas that are open, if you will, um, we could capitalize on, potentially capitalize on some of those areas by putting stormwater chambers, is what, I mean, just for lack of a better term, under parking lots. There's a couple parking lots in town that have that now. Um, so that's an option. We haven't really looked at, you know, outside of buying property, and I don't know that we wanna, you know, I just said it now, but I don't know that we wanna publicize that too much. That really gets people worried, you know, about what's gonna happen. Um, and so I would love to do everything on city-owned property. The reality is that's not always gonna happen. Um, where these school properties have potential because they're open areas, that probably will not be developed by, with buildings, I should say. Um, you can lower an entire field and it's still a flat field. The only time you can't use it as if it's underwater, obviously, and the games are gonna be canceled anyway. Um, the way a lot of these ponds are set up, as, as the one that the city did purchase, it was a, it was a house, right? At Temple Candy, um, is that the water on a typical daily or typical rain or smaller rains or, or even long-term rain that's a smaller amount for a longer period of time, um, the, the system we have works. What happens is when that go, comes too fast or too mu, too much too fast, then it backs up into these ponds and then continues to, uh, as the pipe drains down, then the ponds will drain out again. And so, um, they won't hold water except for large rains. Um, so there's a couple of those options that we can do. Um, Miller Park has a couple of open areas we could possibly use for, because it's got a large storm drain that runs down 11th. And so we've got a couple of options, but, uh, it's hard to say this is exactly where it's gonna, gonna go until we get into it more and, and see what, as Councilmember Alvarado said, see what the, the, uh, the, the public's appetite is for, for using some of that.
Well, I appreciate the comments about the school and district stuff. I was on the school board when this actually came forward before. And, um, one piece that, from someone sitting at the table was the safety issue, particularly as it pertains to the Kennedy property, cause you would be basically making a lake since the water table was so far underneath or so close to the surface, was safety concern of students that were playing outside was one of the major concerns I remember talking about. And they thought if you had to have one, you had to have a fenced in area and so on. And I think a lot of folks are looking at those two school ones and that park idea. It almost seems like what we do with Voss Park may set the table for some of those other two because people are thinking, well, when we see what happened at Voss Park and it floods all the time, we certainly don't wanna have that in our neighborhood. So I know it's fourth on the list, but how we deal with Voss Park may help, uh, the other two school ones. If we bring some fill in and do something and, so there's still a park to play at safely. I think that public would really be more acceptable of those school properties.
You know, and that would be the absolute, absolutely the idea of Voss, you know, and instead of removing material, you bring something in and, and level, level the west end of that park up, you know, and then create a different footprint for that pond. And, and, and by no means is this list set in stone. Obviously, it can be, it's kind of a moving document as things come up, you know, as a why project type things come up, right? And so you got some opportunity to, to, to capitalize on some of this other construction. So maybe it does move ahead of, of one or the other, you know?
It's an opportunity. Cause I mean, I, I think safety was a major issue at that time when we were talking about it, that if you were to redesign Voss Park, put some higher property on there and maybe even fence an area that stays wet all the time, maybe that would show an example that you could use for Garfield or Kennedy.
Sure. Absolutely. That's all I have for you.
Thank you.
Next we have Rob with Robbins Island.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Member of the Council. Tonight I'm gonna talk to you about the Robbins Island project that the Invest in Wilmer, um, group is working on. Um, this is a $3 million project and we've, uh, understand that we need to take out the 25% for engineering and contingency funds on this. So the group has worked really hard off of the, uh, mayor's task force plan, and you'll see that off the, um, handout that he gave you. This is a slide from the June 9th meeting that we had. Um, we talked about several things about parking, um, with the Four Seasons Shelter, um, how it's gonna work with Celebrate the Lights. We have a member, um, James Miller is in our group, so he's, knows about the plan. Um, we have Joy Baker from, um, the Rockin' Robbins. She's also a part of this group too, so she is aware of what we're trying to do out at the island and everything. Um, so we talked a lot about it. We had Bolton and Mink at the table as well. We talked more and more about, um, you know, programming opportunities, how to make the trail, um, that's gonna go up and around the island, um, just into a walking path. Um, you can kinda see how it's going to be, um, a drive-in, go around the Four Seasons Shelter, go around Open Shelter Number Two and then back out, um, how we're gonna barricade that off so we can keep that as a walking path during the summer hours. And then when Celebrate the Lights come, we can open that back up so the loop can still be made. Um, so recently, we just met, um, earlier in December here, and we came up with a little bit of a different, um, plan, and that'll be on your next sheet that you have. Um, some of the members have been talking to other people and they talked about, um, the playground that we have out there and to put a little bit of a, um, handicap parking lot, so it's a little bit more accessible for, um, people that have wheelchairs or just need the parking spot. So we added that little bit of area right, um, you know, north, um, east of the, um, Four Seasons Shelter or southeast of the playground, so it's a lot more accessible for it. Um, you'll also see that black line that comes from, you know, the northeast coming to the Four Seasons Shelter. That's gonna be the water line that's gonna be replaced with this project as well. And so we can get rid of the one that's underneath the beach there. Um, one other thing that we did add, if you go down toward the south end part of it, um, by the, um, fishing pier and that parking lot, there's a blue line that's open by Open Shelter Number One, there's gonna be a trail that will go right into the, um, existing trail that's there so people can get on right there and get onto the walking or biking path. And either they can go into the island or they can go down and they can get to Thompson Park and up and around that way. Um, so there's been a lot of discussion, um, about the Robbins Island and, um, it's good to have all those people that are part about of it with the Celebrate the Lights, so they can kinda see how the flow would be with it. Um, James likes the flow of it. Uh, the Rockin' Robbins group also believes that this is gonna be a good flow for them as well. It keeps the, um, where their concert will be at, uh, the parking that's, um, is going to be out there on the east side of the parking lot, so they'll be able to access that still. Um, and then also we've been working on a timeline, um, that'll be also in your handout as well. Um, we did do some work this fall, um, with some wetland, um, paperwork, so we can get that done, so we can be proactive and be ready to go this spring. Um, there's just some soil boardings that will need to be done here, um, you know, into February. Um, the design and the approval, you'll see all that with the, um, timeline that we've worked with Jared from Bolton and Mink on and the review processes that we have. We have, um, made contact with all the user groups that would be, um, utilizing the, the island in August. The plan is to shut the island down after the last Rockin' Robbins event, so we can get right to work on it. Um, so all those users are aware of the situation, so we've been able to find them different dates if they have an event in August and September, so they've been able to move their dates, so they're all aware of the situation. So when we're ready to go after the last Rockin' Robbins, we're ready to go, so we can get this project started and completed on time.
Just a question about your map. Which parts, I can see that the, the trails must stay. When you have the, the blue going to those trails, um, do the parking lots though, do those come out that are in between the, your parking lots that are on the, the map here now? The existing parking lots, how, how are they gonna be dealt with?
The ones that are there currently right now, they're gonna go into green space.
Okay, so both of those two parking lots to the?
Yep. The existing ones will be demolished. And some of the plan would be too is, um, kinda where that big, that main lot right here. Um, so when we do have the Celebrate the Lights going on, um, I know some of the, um, idea is to put like a skating pond there, um, so people can use that as activities and use the Four Seasons Shelter for programming purposes.
But all the bike trails that are on here, they all stay, right?
Correct.
Um, Rob, the, is this the correct location for the Four Seasons Shelter?
Um, it's fairly close. I would say it maybe be scooped down just a little bit towards the south of it. Um, the road that's going to go there, it's almost right where the Gurry Andreson Shelter Road is right now. So it's gonna go right, right there.
So this drawing really isn't representative of how close it's gonna be?
Yeah, I, it's gonna be further down.
Further down?
Yep.
Okay. But at this point in time, there's no plans to do anything with Gurry in this process?
Um, that's gonna be a, a question, what do we wanna do with the Gurry Andreson Building? Um, you know, we talked about with the road construction, is that the time that we, um, demo that building out or do we put it out as someone, you know, for the auction and everything to see if we wanna get it out of there? It's been moved four times, I believe. So, um, it's, according to Public Works, it's, it's lived its life.
If I remember correctly, I'm sorry. I remember correctly when we were talking about the Four Seasons Shelter, there's a gas tank that's out there. And so I'm assuming that you've taken that safety concerns. The, the way it looks right now, we're moving a close road from the, from one, um, busy area to a close road to another busy area. So I'm just curious if we have enough space there.
It looks like we should be just fine for the space that we have.
Okay.
I was just gonna throw out on the, um, some of the discussions on that Gary building, we had talked about at the different meetings about possibly moving it out to the trap range because they, that building is dilapidated. But as Rob said, it's been moved four times and this, and the Public Works staff didn't think it would survive another move.
And so what we've, um, got an estimate from Bolton and Mink that this project here, and this was the first priority of the group, was to do the roads and the parking lot and the water line. And that's roughly, um, they gave us the, a consulting contract of 1.2 to do this project. So that should give us plenty of money, um, if we want to do the shelters as an alternate into this project.
Thank you, Rob. Um, this does nothing with the parking lot that's to the backside. I noticed when I went through the lights a couple of times this year, there's a lot of people that are parking out there and getting out and walking. That's kind of an area where you can walk out and experience the lights. Is that going to be left? I know you can't get to it, but is it going to be let, left there to be used for Celebrate the Lights?
Yeah, not, everything from the north end of it in Hadeen Park has not been, won't be touched unless there's, uh, um, a want or a need from it, from the group.
So it also could provide some parking for, um, the Rockin' Robbins, for vehicles, et cetera, to be on that backside?
I know you've locked that off, right? I can bring it up to the group and talk to them about.
If we are gonna demo things and so on, let's make sure that, um, any donations or anything else are taken care of. I know, for instance, there's a very significant painting of Yuri Andreson in that room that the artist would, um, would not like to see us demo the artwork. So anything we need to preserve in these buildings, that we make sure we kind of cover all of our bases and there aren't any trees that need to be saved and so on, because that kinda thing often gets overlooked, but it's very important and to certain folks, it's really important. So, yeah.
I also contacted Ridgewater about what their carpentry department do. This is something that they may be interested in doing as well. Um, if we can get the designs, you know, of the, of the shelters that they would be interested in maybe doing the build. So we can use, maximize our resources that way as well.
Um, Rob, on the, on the back where the road's gonna go back and you're gonna make a loop and come around the front, correct?
Yep.
And that's just the road. The other part is a bike path, right?
Correct. That's the thing that we added in there as well by where those two parking lots are by Open Shelter Number Two and Hilltop.
So does this eliminate any parking or fishing back there?
Um, they should still be able to park. They're probably going, not gonna be able to drive their vehicles out. Um, I can bring that up to the group as well. Um, we're thinking that they just go off the fishing pier or the landing that they can just walk out with their sleds.
So the closest parking back there is where those, um, spaces are?
Yes.
Laid out there. The rest of it is just road and you wouldn't be able to leave the road to go down to the point, right?
Yeah, and I go be able to do what they normally have been.
Thank you for your very thorough report. Appreciate it. Next we'll have Rob and Brian talk about the Recreation Event Center, Swanson Field and Recreation Fields. I'm not sure I'm going to, am I going to you first or Rob first?
Uh, I think I'll do, uh,
Brian?
A brief update of where we are and Rob can fill in as, uh, he has something to add to it. As you're probably well aware of, uh, on January 6th, the, the architects that have been recommended, uh, for these, uh, three projects will be submitted to the City Council. So that will conclude the, the selection process. We'll have the construction manager in place, although we have not got a signed contract yet. There, we're still working the, the wording of the, of the document through. And, uh, technically we won't have an architect until we have a contract in hand also. So those things will be coming, uh, in the near future. And the, the committees will then be able to meet with their respective architect and, uh, prioritize what's, you know, what's the most important thing for them to get done and work through the numbers. But I'll just step back a little bit. Uh, the, uh, selection process, uh, was kind of an interesting one because we did, uh, have all three, three committees, uh, participate if they so desired. And, uh, staff and, uh, and the selected committee members, uh, reviewed the proposals, scored them, and then, uh, ranked the, the highest one based on, based on score. And the, uh, the, uh, Invest in Wilmer Committee then met and interviewed the top two firms, uh, for each of the projects. And that, uh, that process took a little bit, but after the presentation, it was, uh, determined that, uh, you know, there was both good candidates as far as architects were concerned, uh, but one, uh, one was always selected. So what we ended up with was, uh, out of the six architectural firms, uh, we selected two firms. One firm is, is going to be performing the architectural services for two of the projects and, uh, the second firm will be doing, uh, the, the one. I believe it's, uh, the REC Event Center and Swanson Field have the same architect and they're the, wait a second. The Recreation Fields in Swanson. The Recreation Event Center is, uh, is, has the architect on its own. It will require the Recreation Fields architect and the REC Event Center architect to work together to some extent because there's parts that touch and there's potentially, you know, a walkway from one building to the inflatable dome, uh, that is being proposed. And so it's, they, they can't operate all by themselves and do whatever they want. They will have to get together and, uh, coordinate their efforts, uh, so that it, uh, gets, uh, you know, completed in a, in a reasonable fashion. So it, it should, uh, it should work out. And, you know, some of the details as far as, you know, uh, having a master plan or, or something like that, uh, you know, we can work that out with, with, uh, the architects. There's some interesting things that popped up through the interview process. One was the emphasis to have a master plan, which I think we can have one. It's just that it, on the two projects that are close by, it becomes a little bit more complex. But it can be done. The other thing that was of notable importance was even though we had selected a timeframe from start to finish, from selection of architect through completion of project, it became apparent, from my perspective anyway, that the architects themselves were extending out the timeline of the projects. And that simply was a reflection of their need to show the community options that they can look at. And in order to do that, you've got to schedule time and have people look at it, hold, you know, a meeting where people can come look at the three sketches, you know, three proposals, kind of a thing, and make comment on it. So almost every one of the architects said, well, you need time for that. And actually extended the projects out to accommodate that. Because it is an important part, that this is the community's parks and facilities and they should be able to see what's going on. The third thing that happened was some of the timing on the, let's say, the Swanson Field project kind of came into question because everybody's saying, we got to get that going, we got to get that going right early in the spring. Soon as the ground is slotted, we got to get that project going. And I believe the architect that was selected basically said, and others, said the same thing, that it may be best to do that project in the fall. Everybody wants their turf fields to be done in the spring or summer. You may get better prices if you wait until the August, September area to do that project. So it was kind of an interesting statement to hear that even though, you know, we're all excited to get this project done, it may be in our best interest just to slow down and we can save some money along the way. So we're not in competition with everybody else who wants their turf done right away. And so some interesting things popped out of having those presentations done. And I guess I'm very satisfied with the selection of the architects. I think we've got good, qualified individuals. And I don't have their names, I don't remember what they were. I should have brought that with me, but you'll see them on January 6th when the recommendations, some of you have seen them already. But you'll see them when it comes to the City Council for sure. Rob, anything I missed that you want to add?
No, I think you pretty much covered it. I think people are excited to get the project started. But again, that might be something that they're going to learn from the architect, that there might be some different layers to the projects that they might have not recognized or seen that may shed some light onto their project as well. And I know each group is trying to make a priority list of what, or needs and wants as well.
One comment, I'll just interject here, is that I heard at the end of it all. And that was, this was a tremendous learning experience for those that have never done this before. And that the truth of the matter is, they would probably have done something different than they had started off with. You know, it's just educational to physically go through the process and have to make decisions. And in the end, you know, you're smarter for it because you've picked up some things along the way. So hopefully, we can utilize some of the knowledge we gained when we talk about, you know, City Hall, Community Center.
Just curious, we kind of, you know, everyone wants to save money and here in different times. But how do the lights we authorized going forward with last time, will maybe forward? Because the architect's not even under contract yet. Are we going to be sharing that kind of information that we've already purchased some lights? And how do they work into it as a design, that kind of thing?
Yeah, if you, if you, I think just remember that the lights are not part of the local option sales tax project.
I understand that.
You know, and a decision about the local option sales tax projects, you know, like let's say at Swanson, are they going to just do orange? Are they going to do orange and blue? You know, those decisions have yet to be decided upon. And when they get finalized and they have their, their projects, you know, nailed down, then we'll be able to say, okay, what can we do with the lights now? Do they go on blue because they has no lights? Or are we totally just going to do orange? So the question is, what comes first, a chicken or egg? And I think in this particular situation, what's happening where in Swanson Field comes first and the lights comes second. If that makes sense to you.
But it does, I just want to make sure that the architect is given that information so they, a design if it has anything. I'm not an architect, all right. But if the lights are part of their process, they need to be aware that these other pieces are working. And assuming that we're working together and sharing all that kind of information once we have this architect on board.
Yeah, I think, I think there's enough people that have an interest on the lighting that that will be shared with the architect numerous times.
I did get to participate in reviewing the architect proposals and it was very educational, I think, all of them. Even the ones that we didn't choose, shared information that we're going to have to come back and think about on the projects. A couple of things, since we talked about stormwater and school-owned property, that's one of the concerns. I think all of the architects were very clear about needing a master plan out there and what's going to come first. And we're talking about school softball fields, we're talking about school, I mean, replacing fields. If we take over the land to the north, there was more land involved in some of the presentations that were there with how that will work and what comes first. But I think it was very clear even from a parking standpoint that we need to have a good master plan before we authorize any of those things going on. And to be clear with, you know, with what the plans are. I mean, the school, I think, is going to have to authorize this too. The other thing that I heard loud and clear from them is that we have great ideas. I mean, some of the concepts and the things there. But they, I think they all expressed a concern about our ability to stay within the budget. But to also go back to that master plan to make sure that we're prioritizing what we can get done with the dollars that we have. But preserving, you know, some of the future design, et cetera, for things to be able to happen in the future. I appreciated even the ones that we didn't choose, what they shared with us in coming with stormwater and some of the other things that'll need to be looked at out there. And so I think the design of those projects will need to come together before we actually move forward on the, on what goes first, kind of thing. Because there will have to be a process to that. But I was surprised at the amount of land that they drew in their concept would be needed to accomplish what we were thinking about, so.
Who is "they"?
The architects.
Okay.
Yeah, most, all the architects basically came with, here's, here's a few of our thoughts. You know, just to break the ice and kind of say, we know you're going to have this facility, you're going to have a dome, you're going to have, you know, the football fields or soccer fields. And here's how it would lay out. Yet to be finalized, but we just want to put something on paper to give you an idea. I think it's more or less to show that they have the capabilities of, you know, understanding your project and, and, you know, the whole discussion about they're taking the existing parking lot and the existing facilities and, you know, adding on and rearranging. I know one comment that I made at one point in time was, the whole thing gets reimagined if you don't keep the existing parking lot. You know, I mean, there's things you can do. You would, you would put buildings differently or you would put parking, you know, adjacent to it. And we've not explored those ideas. They're just taking what the existing layout is and saying, yeah, here's some ideas we put together. You know, it's all electronic at this stage for them, so it doesn't involve a whole lot of work. But when we finally get down to prioritizing the aspects of our projects and trying to fit them into the space that's allotted, there's going to be some give and take on, you know. If you put this building here, it's going to cost you an extra $200,000. If you, if you don't put it over here, you can save that money. Those decisions are so far out at this point in time, but at least those drawings helped you get an idea. Does, does the land we have, does it allow it to happen? And in all the cases, you know, they represented that it can happen. They just don't know how it's going to connect. You know, how is this building going to connect to that one? And how is the hallway go from here to here to here? Those are details that are probably four or five months out yet.
Thank you. Now, we've got the curlers and they're going to want to build a building. So we want to make sure we have their footprint in mind as they develop out there also. So don't, we can't exclude them or the Invest in Wilmer can't forget about them because that's a big piece that we got to keep in mind, so anyways.
Yeah, and that kind of hinges on the concept of a master plan. You're putting lots of things in that event, or Recreation Event Center location. And you want to not only think of today, but next week and next year and next 10 years, how does it all flow? And that's where I think a majority of the architects were saying, you know, what's your plan? You know, we'll, we'll help you with that plan and how this all develops so that you don't end up going, no, we can't do anything anymore. We're at the end of the water pipe, you know? There can be no more extension or you can't go in that direction anymore. So they want to leave options open. The other thing that they wanted to, I think, to emphasize, I think everybody understands that the budget is, has been determined already, okay? And they were, I believe, recognizing the fact that maybe not everything on every project wish list is going to get funded. So they were emphasizing the need to stage and to plan for future things. If you've got eight things you want and you can only fund six, you may have a phase two and a phase three at some when more money becomes available through other sources, whether it's taxes or another local option sales tax at a later date. So they're basically saying, you can, you can set this up so that you have this master plan. You didn't get everything you wanted first go around, but the second go around, you can add on. And then the third go around, you can add on so that you don't end up blocking yourself in saying, oh, we can, you know, we can never do number eight because we just don't have the space anymore. So it's interesting and they're going to walk the city, the committees, through this whole process on, on what's your priority? And are you, are you leaving enough land for other parts of the project that you maybe can't afford right now? So it'll be an interesting process.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for your reports, appreciate that. Next, we'll go to the fourth item on the agenda, which is general discussion on City Hall Community Center projects. Mr. Gramm, it's our city administrator.
Mr. Mayor and City Council members, this is a project that constitutes part local option sales tax funding and part municipal funding. And we've had some tours to go look at other community centers. We've had tours to look at other city halls that may have a community center attached to them. And we've also looked at just, you know, newer city halls, just to get an idea of what sort of the facility looks like, how it coordinates with other aspects like community centers, how it, how it works together. The task force has met. They were, again, presented, not the final version because it had some mistakes in it, but the RFPs that were substantially completed to give the idea of this is what it looks like, this is the project. And those have been released and advertised. We're getting a tremendous amount of, I think, interest from both construction management firms that are interested in that aspect of the project and also the architects, the architectural firms that are interested in doing a City Hall Community Center project. The next step is that on January 7th, there will be a, a pre-proposal meeting, which just invites the prospective construction managers and architects to come and, and ask questions of the city. What do you mean by this? What does a community center mean to you? So we have an idea because then a week later, their proposal will have to be in. They have to put it all together and submit it. And once that's done, there's a timeline in the, in the request for proposals that lays out the time for staff and the community center members and the City Hall task force to review, you know, the architects' proposals and the construction managers. And ultimately, it'll come to the city, back to the City Council just like the local option sales tax construction manager and architect have done and will be done on January 6th. So it's started its process and it's, it's got a ways to go. You know, it's not, it's not going to happen overnight, just like the local option sales tax. It takes a, you know, two or three month time period to work its way through that, that process and select somebody. But also in that same time, I think, we know there's $2 million in local option sales tax for the community center. That's been identified, that was voted on by the citizens and authorized by the state legislature. The, the 2020 budget didn't include any debt service because number one, if you were building a City Hall Community Center in 2020, you wouldn't have to pay any debt off until 2021. So that's why there's nothing in the, in the 2020 budget. There has been some discussion, I think, in the past about, was it an eight and a half million dollar project with two of it coming from local option sales tax? Or was it an eight and a half million dollar project with an additional $2 million coming from the local option sales tax? I guess since I've been here, I've been under the, under the impression that it was, it was eight and a half plus the two for the total of 10 and a half. That's, that's just my understanding of how it was put together. I know there's been some discussion in past meetings where that may not have been the case. But that's how it is set up. And the City Council has complete control, you know, whenever they have a City Council meeting to make that decision to change that. I do know that, based on the dollars that, that we heard when we went and toured the city halls and community centers that we did, that to have eight and a half million dollars for both buildings is on a fairly low side. I don't know that you could, you know, realistically get everything we want done for eight and a half million dollars. You see the priority list or you see the list of the community center and the woodworking shop and the plaster room or the ceramics room and the, you know. All of these things take up space, they take up a piece of that $2 million. We built, or are in the process of building a Four Seasons Shelter for more than a million. And so it's my belief that the community center is going to take at least $4 million. It's just, it is. So if you take the 10 and a half million, that leaves City Hall with about 6 and a half million. So if you take the 10 and a half million, that leaves city hall with about $6.5 million. And I don't remember, was it Chaska Carver? Carver was a relatively smaller city, city hall. And I was not on that particular trip, but that, if I'm not mistaken, was told to me that that was roughly about five, you know, $5 million. And as I understand it, we would need substantially more city hall than what they had gotten for $5 million. So I'm looking at the budget. Whether you think it was eight and a half total or 10 and a half total, at 10 and a half, I'm wondering if we're going to be able to meet and meet the needs of both city hall and community center. Now, that's the challenge of the architect and that's what we're going to be presenting to that individual firm that's selected. And we'll, you know, ultimately, we'll see. I know I've had some discussions that leads into, how will we then pay for that? I think over the last two years or so, Mr. Okens has submitted a document from our labor attorney that, you know, reflects, you know, the four or five different ways you can finance things, you know, for a city. One of them is with general obligation bonds, but that does require a referendum, you know, to be approved by the residents. You can lease purchase. You could, if you wanted to, spend your own money, you know? If you have the reserves and you said, this is what we want to spend it on, you can also do that. So there are ways to accomplish, or you can do combinations. You could take some reserve funds and say, this is what we're going to use as our down payment and we're going to, you know, borrow the remaining amount. Those decisions, I think, after talking with Mr. Okens today, he is anticipating that we'll be getting deeper into the financing for 2020 in January, I think, starting in the finance committee. That won't just be for city hall, but city hall will be one of those things. It's going to be, you know, for our street construction projects, how the financing will be set up for that. In all likelihood, the local option sales tax bonds and the timing and when we need the money and for those projects will be laid out so we know when to borrow and have money on hand. And so there's many decisions yet to be made. Not even talking about, do you front end load or rear end load your bond? Do you look at your whole entire debt history, your future history? Where you look at it and go like, well, in 2028, we've got a big hole. We don't have much debt there. So that year, we can put more of our city hall debt in there. So it's more even across the board. Those decisions and conversations are just going to initiate in January. So, you know, it's not that staff is forgetting about them. We know we got to pay for this. It's just when we sit and talk about what our debt needs are going to be for 2020 and 2021, it has to start somewhere. And this is where we bring all of our financing needs into one spot and talk about everything we're doing. So it's not just looking at one item and saying, oh, we can afford that, looking at another item and see, oh, we can afford that. But when you add the two together, wow, we can't afford that, you know? It has to be a big picture. It has to be a big picture and that's, I'm going to assure you, that's coming down the road. And, you know, obviously finance will be involved and obviously city council will be after that too. Because that sets the plan for many years into the future as to what our debt levy is going to be and how we finance this particular project. I know it's been bothering, I won't say it's been bothering me. I've always, I'm a sort of a direct person. So when somebody says, yeah, we're going to build a $10 million city hall, and I'm going to say, how are you going to pay for it? And we're getting to that point where I think those decisions, you know, will need to be made. How do you want to pay for it? I mean, you haven't approved the project yet, you know? We just went out to see if there's any architects. It's a long road and financing is just one of them.
I'll probably talk to just the design a little bit. Just that when, it's going to be a unique project. After going to a lot of other communities and normally if you're talking community center, people are talking swimming pool and walking track and all that kind of stuff. And that isn't our community's needs for a community center. I would say we probably lean more towards a senior citizen center and meeting rooms, which I think is going to be a good partnership with the city hall in the same building. Because I think that we have more opportunity for shared space, whether it's the larger area from the council chambers that would be used by the community center for dances or larger gatherings to some of the meeting rooms that would take, that could be used for some of the functions of the community center that we have now. So I think I'm excited about the shared space part of it, but it's going to be interesting to see what the architects come up with for ideas of how that can happen. And after we, you know, visited some of the places, we got some good idea of a good, like, public works area, what they need for space and drawers and what that should look like. And there was, St. Michael's had a really nice, long public works area. They also had a nice clerical copy room filing area. That was a good design. So it was very beneficial to go to some of these places to see some of their designs. And even architecturally, what they did with, that wouldn't take cost, but just aesthetics of curves in the tiles, in the hallways and on some of the walls, some of the design just to, so it isn't just cubicles and straight up walls. But so again, just trying to stretch our money that, to at least have it look nice for what it's going to cost. But I think there will also probably have to look at a partnership or a combined committee between what's been the city hall task force and the community center task force that will have to go together during the beginning part of some of the architectural design part before it goes out to the community. And I will be meeting with the senior citizen board, I think, the second week in January. They just want a little bit of an update on what's happening and where things are at as well.
I can go, so. Always been supportive of that this community needs a new city hall and I'm supportive of putting community center together. I'm somewhat taken back by the figure that's in there. And I think for me, from a financial standpoint, I am curious with why we came up with a figure and we haven't addressed how we're going to pay for it yet. That's a concern for me. And working on the budget this last year, and if I'm hearing the estimate correctly, whether we do bonds or whether we do a lease or whatever, we're still going to be looking at a $400,000 to $500,000 payment annually. And there isn't room in the budget as it stands right now for that figure. How do we do that? I think other communities have planned for building a city hall financially for a while. I did go on tour the tours with that. And I think one of the concerns that I had too is we weren't looking at the same sized communities. There were some great designs, very much no paper in facilities, up to date IT, lots of different things. Carver, for example, built, rebuilt or built a building that architecturally looks like where it's at. And so they had to spend extra money to make that building look old. And it's beautiful with that. I'm just curious how we came up with the $10 million. We already put the proposals out there without the council actually talking about it. I get the space, I mean, if we're talking about building this big, but how are we creating efficiencies in what we're doing? And can this community afford what we're proposing? We've got a lot of great things going on. We've got local option sales tax projects. We've acknowledged that there's going to be additional costs with those, that we're going to have to work on that. And so it's no different than building a house. You'd go out and get qualified for a payment before you said, I'm going to build a million dollar house. I really would like for us to see what the plans are for the payments and how we're going to incorporate that into our budget before we just go out there and say, we want this done by next fall. Because I'm just curious with how we're going to do this. We need to do it correctly. This is a building that's going to last this community for how long? 30, 50 years? But looking at the things that are listed in here, you know, how did those prioritizations come up? We talked about these things on the tour. We didn't prioritize. We didn't, I mean, we had a conversation about what we saw and what we liked and those types of things. So I'm just curious how we got this far without knowing how we're going to pay for it.
Well, I guess I would just reiterate that at any time, the city council can, you know, put the brakes on this. But in, as I've been told by our finance director, that, you know, January starts the serious discussion of our future debt for the upcoming, you know, year. And that's where I think the bulk of the discussion, you know, of how this is going to be financed and what the actual impact on the taxpayer is going to be. That's where it's going to, I think, be discussed in much more detail than it has up to this point in time.
My understanding, I share a lot of the concerns that Councilor Nelson just talked about. Shared many of them at the task force. This thing has evolved and it continues to evolve. And maybe we were not as educated when we started off of what costs were going to be. But we had a placeholder for city hall between four and four and a half million dollars. We didn't make a decision on that because we didn't know what we were going to do, where it was going to be. And we focused on where it was going to be. And we had a $2 million holder for community center because that was the estimate they had for renovating the existing thing back up to standard. We knew that if we're going to build a new one, it would be more than $2 million, maybe four. So that's why we had an eight to eight and a half million dollar placeholder for that. And because the community center was included, the $2 million was included there. And then I came to the last meeting and we had a $10.5 million piece. And I heard from some of the people that went out that they saw things that were very nice that would probably cost more than what we would have. And so that's where I share some of the concerns is we have a task force. Task force, my understanding, are very different than standing committees. I don't know if the communication is coming as fast from our task force back to the rest of the council about what we want to do and where we want to go. Because then there's this gap. And if we truly, as a council, want all of these things to be included in a design, then that comes with a cost. But then at least everybody's on board going, that's what it is. And then there isn't just an initial sticker shock of an extra $2 million that just showed up. And it seems like it was kind of arbitrary. I'm sure that's not what it is, but it felt that way initially when I heard the number. I can appreciate if they're tied to certain things. Otherwise, it's one of those things that we have a certain amount of money that we can spend and what can we get for that? And I don't know if our first initial ones, we were just naive and didn't have the right number out there, but those were the numbers we've had. Now, if 10 and a half million is the realistic number for what we want, but I still don't know what we want in it either. So I'm sitting at a loss. I'm keeping my ears open. I'm trying to take in all the information I can. But right now, I feel like there's a disconnect perhaps between information we're getting in and it getting disseminated to the entire council. I'm not frustrated yet, but I'm listening.
So my question would be, at what point here then, I feel like it has to be fairly soon, that we make a decision to decide, is it eight and a half or is it 10 and a half? Because the architects are going to need to know. So when is that going to happen?
Yeah, they've actually been notified in the RFP that the estimated project cost is $10 million. Now, that can change. That's just the RFP, you know? That's our estimate. If we come back and say, no, it's 9 million or it's eight and a half, that's what they'll design to. And they'll say, you can do it or no, you can't do it. But that's your decision.
At what point?
Well, at...
When are we making that decision? That's my issue. We can talk about it all we want, but when are we going to vote on what it's going to be?
I would assume it's after the January discussion about how much is too much.
Okay.
I can appreciate Julie's comment, but I was, I'm saying, when are we going to talk about it? We're talking about it tonight. How did we come up? I don't know how we came up with 23,000 square feet. I don't know how big the community center needs to be. I saw some great, great locations with those. It would be wonderful to have facilities like that in Wilmere. But I couldn't compare the size. Those communities were smaller than us. What do we need? What are we putting in it? So if public works is staying where they're at and the police are staying where they're at and the fire department's staying where they're at, are we moving, are we creating any efficiencies by moving anything together that we will have less costs other places that can be incorporated into saving money one place to spend it somewhere else? I haven't heard any of those discussions. Now, it was suggested that I listen to the last task force meeting because I commented, I think, at the last minute meeting that we didn't get the minutes we got were from, you know, I'm not quite sure how to do this. I don't want to bog this down, but at the same time, to hear that there's a timeline out there for this building to be complete next August, how are we, yeah, we need to make decisions, but how is the council? How are we doing this? So with that. And so I'm open to whatever, but I'm just curious, what is 23,000 feet? Do we have to rent? Should we rent? You know, what kind of space do we need?
All good questions. The actual size was identified by the Engen report where he went through every office that currently at city hall and said, how much space do you actually need, office by office? Not what's currently there because that's filled with inefficiencies and voids and usable space. But how much do you, as community development director, how much do you need? You need 200 square feet or you need 250 square feet? So that analysis had been done and that's how it came up to roughly that 23,000 square feet.
So if I can just follow up with that, part of the ones that we saw, the concept was for you not to have a huge office, but to have a small office and more meeting space rooms where you could go meet with people. So does that Engen report incorporate that kind of efficiency or that kind of thought process? And how, you know, not everybody had an office. Is everybody going to have an office? Some people want bigger, some want smaller. I mean, how did we come up with those figures?
Again, all good questions. And the Engen report was not completed in total. It got...
Stopped.
A 50% of the way or 30% of the way or, you know, pick a number. And it was stopped. And I did get a report of the spatial needs of the existing operation, which amounts to that number. Now, if an architect we select to design city hall is good at spatial and efficiencies and effectiveness and all those type activities, he or she may be able to reduce that 23,000 down to 18.5 just by design all by itself. But that's what you go through when you get through the architectural review of saying, this is the space we think we need. And the architect can lay out some concepts and say, but this is what you could get by with, with a lot more common space and not so much private space, okay? But that's a process that happens when you use the architect. So we're not going to come up with that because we're going to look at city hall and say, we all need our own little room. And, you know, take for example, my office. The room could be smaller. It's just that's how big the room is. That's what it was when the city hall moved into that building. It was an existing building. And so therefore, you use what's there. So are there inefficiencies in the existing city hall? Sure, there are. Those should be reduced and are eliminated for the most part when an architect looks at them and says, okay, here's how I would lay it out. So although good questions, the answers won't come... So although, good questions, the answers won't come for a long time. Uh, another question that you, you raise is, are, are we going to be, uh, leasing space to, uh, another party? And that's, that's, that's a decision if you say, well, I can't even afford what I need to build. There's no way I can build leasable space. Or maybe you can build a leasable space and that money is, is what's helping you pay the debt. You know, that, that analysis has not been done and it won't be done until we get to that architectural phase where we start talking about what does it actual cost? And, and then you have to compare that to what is our expense side? What's our debt side? And then you have to, as a council, you make decisions.
My question would be is, what's our obligation to the renter? I know we've asked that before. Are we, are we in a contract that we have to, um, fulfill?
Maybe somebody else knows the answer to that question. I don't.
I, I thought when we re, we had to renew their lease, but I thought that it was written in that, that we could get out of the lease. And I think there are people at this table who know the answer to that, so.
You can. I don't think we're in any obligation. They're aware of, of our plans. But perfect case in point, when Engen, we, we just did a footprint, um, in my discussions with the folks from Mid-Minnesota, they like, this footprint, like you said, there's inefficiencies in that footprint. They said, we don't need all this space. We don't need to have a meeting room that's separate here. We don't need to have this. We don't need... So their space needs would be much, much smaller than a fifteen-hundred square foot holder that was put into the plan, but the plan had to start somewhere. Now I understand if it's just from the square footage that you measured it out, I get that. That's where it started, but that's truly not what they said they could, they could go with a much smaller space. But I don't know, there's, if those conversations have been having, if you've had those now...
Yeah, I, I've had conversations and, uh, they've submitted their spatial needs to me and I think I put in the document thirty-one hundred square feet just as a placeholder, because I don't know. And they, and they provided me a, uh, an, an analysis of their spatial needs of like twenty-two hundred feet or two thousand feet or something like that. So, yeah, they're, they don't need as much space as they have currently either.
Um, Brian, I believe you said that, um, Mr. Elkins would be prepared to do something in January with us, um, to bring forth some models for how we can finance this? Or what, and costs or what, what, what have you been working on with him?
Okay, what, what I am anticipating that, that starts and initiates in January is a discussion about all of our bonding needs for twenty-twenty and, and twenty-twenty-one, you know? What do we need in these upcoming years? So it's not just talk about City Hall. It's every, all of our needs. It's streets, it's wastewater plant, it's, you know, it's everything that we have on our plate, so that you see all of our needs in, in one location. And then you can then say, that's too big of a burden or that's, that's, that's a reasonable burden for the taxpayers to pay. That's, that's at that point where you sit, after all that discussion and analysis of what's needed, you can sit there and say, you know, maybe, maybe this is, this, this is gonna work. But it's not gonna be just individually, project by project. Well, it will be, but, but you're gonna end up with the total bonding needs and then that'll all be forecast out, you know, twenty years. So you can see what it does. Uh, even, even for like the local option sales tax, you sit back and say, what are our needs over the next two years? And here's when we're gonna bond this seven million and here's when we're gonna bond the next seven million dollars and you're gonna go through that process. Well, City Hall, uh, debt or bonding would be in the same, in the same vein. And then you layer those, you put your local option sales tax out here, of course, that has a revenue stream, so it's kind of neutral. But if you have streets where you're gonna have to pay debt off, you layer those things out and you see what the actual impact is. So if you say, well, uh, the, uh, property taxes are, are gonna go up eight percent, uh, then at that point, unless you know what that dollar figure is, you know what the impact is on your budget and then it's up to the, uh, city council to decide if that's enough or too much or not enough. But that discussion would initiate in January.
So if we go back to Julie's question of when do we decide this? So is it something that we can agree as a council that we're not going to decide on ten million dollars until we know how we're going to pay for it? I mean, that we could put a timeline out there to say, we need to know what these payments are gonna cost and, and how this community's going to pay for that debt before we agree that we can afford to do ten million dollars?
I would anticipate that you're gonna have the financial discussions before you're gonna be prepared to even review which architect you want to, you know? There's time. There's time to talk about the financial side of this thing before you get too far down the road, before you even encumber any, any costs, uh, before you select an architect or a construction manager. There, there's time to have this discussion.
So these documents were sent out on December second? What's the timeline or what timeline was given to the people for their proposals?
Uh, it'd be the fourteenth that they would come in and then it's like four weeks after that, fourteenth of January, then it's four weeks after that. And you can, you can say, we got them, we scored them, we're gonna hold interviews three months from now. That's up to you. You know, you don't have to have the interview two weeks after you get the, get the proposals like we did for the, the original three that we just did. You don't have to operate that fast if you don't want to. Uh, if you're not satisfied with how it's, the financing is, you don't select that architect. You just sit on it and you wait until you feel comfortable with how you're gonna finance it and then you make your selection and move on.
So in addition to the financing, is there something else we should be doing regarding space? I mean, you sort of indicated we went partway and then we stopped, so do we know that, are we on track with the amounts that are being proposed and...
I wouldn't, I wouldn't do any more on the Engen report at this point in time because we've got, we've got how much space we think we need and it, and it likely will be less because of how it's designed. That's, you know, that's just a, a fact, I think. And that part of it is with whoever you select as an architect. That's what they do for you. You, you've laid the floor printout, I think I need this much space. He or she may come back and say, you don't need that much space. Here, look what I've done for you. And, and, and I mean, that's how it's done.
I do think that there, there were some ideas that we saw at some of the other city halls of things that we would incorporate that we hadn't thought of as well. Um, so the, the assumption that we're gonna need less space, um, I, it's possible, but I think there was also, just for instance, a mudroom. The guys come in from, um, assessing and to be able to have an area to take muddy boots off and hang up clothes. It's like that had, we haven't had that, but that's a good idea, because then that also goes to carpet and who has to clean it. It's just a little detail, but it was an area that, uh, that was, that some of them had and it made sense. So designing a new building, sometimes there's just some additions that makes sense. And it isn't, and it isn't a want. It, it, it's like, it makes sense for the longevity of the building.
This, this is just something I'll just run on that topic and that is just simply, it just sparked my memory again, is that if you look at the entries of, of the newer city halls, they got three thousand square feet of public space for people just to get in, take their coat off, mill around and, and, and our current City Hall has about, oh, fourteen square feet, I think, you know, right there in that front area? I mean, it's, it's, it's a whole different facility than what we're currently in. And that's the beauty of the architect, that he can look at that and say, here's what, here's what you really need. You need three thousand square feet of public space. And you may get efficiencies in your operations, smaller offices and more, more open areas back there for, uh, uh, joint activities, but your public space, I think, is the important front face of your City Hall. And that can serve two purposes, the community center part and also the City Hall, so you're doubling up on both.
Yeah, I, I'm kinda going off what he's saying about doubling up on stuff. So we have the City Hall with the thirty-one or twenty-three thousand square feet and then fifteen to twenty thousand square feet on the community center, but a lot of these things are gonna be shared, you know? So for instance, the council chambers, um, you know, we saw some where they, they turned it into the dance exercise area. So, and the same with the, um, you know, the hall where you walk in. I mean, we're sharing it. So I think some of the square footage could be cut down that way. Or the mudroom even.
Another thing that's come up is, and I know this isn't immediate, but the heating right now for the present City Hall, there's been, um, different comments of how that was going to take place, if it was gonna be temporary heat or if we were gonna put in a, um, a permanent heating furnace or what we are doing. So as long as we're just having an open discussion about facilities, I would like to know what exactly is happening with the heat. Who knows?
Uh, I think that's, uh, that's a conversation that Sean can step forward on. Hey, I'm just joking. I, I, you know, the, the whole steam system right now is being operated off the, the, the back of a flatbed semi. It's a rental unit that is providing all the steam for anybody who's on steam currently, including City Hall.
Over at Public Works or over at, um...
At the utilities.
Utilities.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's on the backside. You can see it. Uh, I think when you come from the lakeside and head, head towards town, you can see it right alongside the building. It's just a semi-flatbed. It's a boiler, you rent it and, uh, uh, the decision to do what the, the council wants to do has not been made. But I would anticipate that, that, um, a unit that we could, you know, rent short-term to fill the needs, uh, for as long as we're in there, uh, is not very big. You know, maybe on a small trailer, but, but, uh, could be rented and utilized to, uh, keep the facility, you know, heated as needed, uh, until such time as the city council decides, uh, that, you know, are we gonna take the building down and make a parking lot out of it? So no need to put a new furnace in there or, and the alternative, no, we're gonna put a, a new furnace in it and market, uh, this building, you know, for something else. Now, that, that's up to the city council again. But I think, you know, the, actually the ability to rent a small boiler is, is always there.
We used the task force concept to find a location and everybody on this council knows how long that took. There's a whole lot of under, other questions. I mean, task force bring recommendations back to the council. That's what they do. We have now questions of costs, space, financing, utilization of space, and none of those decisions have been brought here. Instead, we decided to package them all together and bring them at once. I think that is gonna create, I mean, if anybody has a problem with any of those four little subpieces, you could put holes in those and it, it just seems like maybe we should find some accord on, agreement on some of these concepts or these pieces, because having the whole thing come, because you, everyone recalls how successful we were at finding a location when we just, that was one piece and now we're bringing four. At least, there's probably more than I'm not seeing here, but there's four pieces that we're trying to get approved all at one time. And I just fear that any one of these, if you have disagreement, can derail this process. So I would, I would, I hope that we have a way to start sharing some concerns about those that's productive, so we can find some kind of a, an agreement to move those forward, because right now it feels like it's gonna be all or nothing and I, and I don't want that to happen, because I've seen what happens when that happens. It's all or nothing, we kick it down the road for a few more months and that few more months becomes a half a year, that becomes a year and a half.
I don't disagree with what you're saying to find a process, but, um, one of the concerns that I've had for us is that we have too much on our plate and that we're trying to shove everything through in one year. And I think we have, uh, responsibilities to do it right for our community, even if that means it takes us six months longer or whatever. But, um, I don't know what the process should be since it appears that the document's already out there, but I think, um, Mr. Gronitz has put out there, um, his concerns about the financing side of it and that we will be hearing on that and maybe we all need to take a little time to figure out what we're, how we wanna address that and how this community's gonna pay for it. Um, because I think that's our responsibility is to make sure that what we're doing is right for our city for the next thirty to fifty years and that we're not, what are we not going to do because we're going to make that payment? So...
Again, the, the financing is, is important, but I would not belittle any of those other pieces. The space utilization is huge as well, as is the square footage of the building or the cost of the building. I mean, I, I, they all kind of go together.
They do.
So I'm not just waiting for a financing answer. I mean, that's one piece to the puzzle. I'm more interested in space utilization, but I'm not, not ignoring financing, but that's important. They're all important pieces.
So when, when do you see that process happening? Cause I'm thinking, I'm just, I'm sitting in a position where I'm on the finance committee, I'm on the City Hall task force and I'm with the community center task force. So I'm getting the information. So if I wasn't, then I'm thinking, how would I want to get it? And so, um, I'm just, I'm thinking there will be, the City Hall task force has a responsibility of whatever, the, they're gonna do some of the first redesigning. Then there'll be community meetings. Is that where the, the city council gets up to speed and has their input and gets to see some of the archi- architectural drawings? Um, is that sufficient for you or are you thinking that's something that's gonna happen at a city council meeting? I guess my question would be, and as far as delaying the process, when and how do you wanna get brought up to speed and where, and, and ahead of when or what?
You asking me?
Yep, because...
Cause I mean, I think we had a great example tonight for stormwater. You have a priority listing, boom, 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 here are the projects. I, I know that there are dollar amounts, I didn't ask it, that are tied to each of those projects. But now that they're put in a priority listing and I can share my input at that time that I thought, maybe Voss Park should move up on that ranking and we can have that dialogue now. And now he'll go back and discuss with his group and they, it, to me, could have been brought in those tangible pieces to deal with it, because, you know, if all of a sudden for finance, we decide, when we get that information, that eight and a half is the magic number. Well, if we have a whole bunch of ideas that need to go in that utilization piece, I'd ask you to prioritize those and maybe the mudroom doesn't make it. I don't know the answer to that, but that's why I say there's a lot of variables that come together, but to have it all brought at once is very difficult when we couldn't even get a location at once.
I think the task force has a responsibility to, to sell it to the city council first. I mean, if the council doesn't support it, then why would you go out to the community and ask for community engagement if we're not? There should have been community engagement in this community center portion of this before it came to, because there's two different components there. But the task force has a, it was set up to bring the information to the council and the council has a responsibility to buy into it and be responsible for it. And so if you're gonna, you know, we need to be accountable that we can make the payments and that we are doing the right size and that it is the right, um, you know, that it is futuristic and it is visionary with that. So I'm not sure, um, but I, I feel like we've, for a variety of reasons, just haven't been brought along in the process and now we're here. And the proposal went out with figures in that we saw when we got the document. That's difficult to, to know if it's the right thing to do.
And, and I also, there's that whole cart before the horse thing. As far as the community center needs, um, there was a meeting with the stakeholders, with the people who are presently using it and what they felt their needs would be. And that, and their priority list of what they wanted was, was documents... And that, and their priority list of what they wanted was documented. And so that discussion was had. Then, my understanding was, after architects could get involved and after some building layouts could be given and presented to the public, that's when there would be more discussion and more input from the public. It wasn't solid. We knew things were going to be fluid. We knew that these architectural drawings are going to change probably ten times. Who knows? But it also goes back to the discussion that Mr. Grammets brought up earlier about the event center and some of those other projects. People had ideas. People had dreams. They had visions. But they had to come up with a figure. And it's like, do you put a whole lot of work into researching and nailing down all the square footage and everything that's going to be involved when you don't even know if you're going to have the local option sales tax yet? They weren't going to put in that kind of time. And I think part of that also goes to the city hall and the community center. We have a basic understanding. We had the Incan report. We have a basic starting point of what we need for space. We have the present community center. We have a basic starting point of the kind of space needs we're going to have. And then I think we're going to get some architectural drawings and we're going to be able to go from there. Now, they're just... My thing is, is that going to be the city task force? And the community center's task force? Responsibility to tweak it to a little bit that they then present it to the council? Or they then present it to the public? That's the kind of... I mean, I don't want to drag this thing out. What's the procedure? What information do you want at what point? And let's nail it down.
I don't disagree with you. But as a council member, I'm going to be responsible to explain why we chose $10 million or 23. And the first I saw it was in this document. I understand what you've gone through. I think you just forgot the rest of the council in the process.
Nope, I don't think I have. And I think some of that's going to come with the architectural drawings. Because we're going to be able to say, this is what the community said they wanted. This is what the community needs. And it's either going to take 8.5% or it's going to take 10.5% to build that. And then that's also the part where we sell or present to the rest of the council that that's why it needs to be this number. Or we're not going to be able to give the community what they need.
I guess I... I hear what you're saying. But what I'm seeing is that the task force has met and made decisions or have... And now are bringing it and that, you know, figure out the process. I don't know.
And that's what I'm saying. Do we... Do you want that in minutes from the meetings? Is that going to be enough to be informed about what's going on? Or do you want it to be a presentation at the council meetings to recap where things are at? That's all I'm saying is, like I said, I'm in a lot of the pieces of it. So if I wasn't, I'm thinking, what would make me comfortable? What's going to make you comfortable of getting that information to be able to make these decisions?
The structure that I...
Other than being in those meetings?
The structure I understood was the task force would bring it to the council for a recommendation. The council should vote on it. The task force minutes are only accepted as information. They are not voted on.
Okay.
And so a task force is a different process. And so we're here now. The forms are already out there. There was a resolution saying to go ahead and do this. But the figures in the resolution, I think, should be voted on by the city council. What we're going to build and how we're going to pay for it and what those figures would be. Because it's no different than building a house.
Yep.
Until you look at the monthly payment, you can't decide what you can build. And we are now here looking at, how are we going to pay for something? Do we need it? Can we afford it? Should it be phased in? How are we going to do this? If we wait a year, can we afford it? I don't know that. But I do think, as a council member, we have a right to vote on it.
I... I'm thinking that we're not aborting tonight on whether we're going to build it this way or that way. I'm hearing our city administrator saying, hey, here's another piece coming forward. It's going to be the financial piece. This is the big picture. We've got all this to look at. This is going to be this piece. I don't believe that the task force has done anything to circumvent the city council. We have brought our minutes as to what we've seen and what we liked and what we think would be a benefit to our city hall. And we're not saying that this is it. We've never indicated or wanted to indicate that this is the way we're going to do this and this is the line in the sand. No, we don't. We haven't done that. We have sharing ideas, and that's what we're doing. And then we're going to get some information, I think, starting in January. And I don't know that we're going to be able to make the decision in January saying, hey, we've got the money, we can do it. But I think it's going to be bigger than that. Because this is a great, great amount of money that we're responsible for as a community. And I think we also have to keep in mind is, the community has asked us to... They have voted and told us they want a new city hall. And they voted for the local option sales tax and indicated that, hey, we want to put some money into a community center. I think we have an obligation that kind of keeps this thing moving. But I don't think we have to make a decision right now until we get some more information. And I think that's what Brian is trying to tell us. We're just be patient and there's going to be more information.
I just want to clarify. I know we haven't voted. But there is a document out that's been sent to construction managers and to architects, saying that we are looking for proposals for $10 million. That's a statement to me that says that we intend to build a building for $10 million and we're looking for proposals. That's all I'm saying. When we say we've made decisions, it has definite square footage and it has definite figures in there. And all I'm saying is that I think the council should have had an opportunity to review that figure.
The square footage, we talked about that. That was actually pivotal in finding the location. So I'm okay with the square footage piece, because that's what we talked about. I'm also okay with the eight and a half million dollars, because that's what we actually talked about as a council before. So if you asked what I would want, you tell me what's going to be between eight and a half and $10 million? What pieces were put into that? Because I'm on the task force and I never heard that conversation. What pieces were added to the project in our minds that gets me from eight and a half to 10 and prioritize them? Because based on how the financing comes in, then we're going to have to do like anybody else does and say, we're going to pare these things back. So if you want to know what I would look for, that's precisely what I would look for. What's the difference between eight and a half and 10? Because I talked about eight and a half. I didn't talk about 10. I can be sold on 10 if it's what, again, it needs to be. But I don't know that. That number was just sort of plucked out. And I was told, people that went and visited places saw these things and they cost more. Well, what things did you see that cost more that makes that cost go up? So for me, that's... If you want something very concrete, that's what I'd want to know is, what changed that number from eight and a half to 10? Because if I have to make it go back to eight and a half, I need to know what to take out when we bring an architect onboard and we have all these great ideas, because we're going to have them, of how do we afford what we, as a community, can afford? And I don't know the answers to that.
Well, I've been quiet all night. I've gotten pushed into the corner, so I'm going to come out of the corner. You know, I go back and I look at the first time that the city hall was proposed, which was three years ago. And we got a certain point down the road. And we had council members that said, you know, we don't have this. We don't have that. We don't have the other thing. We've got to have this. We've got to have that. And so we backed up. So let's, as Councilmember Alvarado said, let's look at what the community has said. The exact same thing happened on the local option sales tax. I went through the process that every other mayor goes through on a local option sales tax project. I met with constituents. I met with people that were interested in projects. I met with other leaders within the community. New London, Spicer, Candyway County. I brought it to this council and the council tore it apart. You don't have this. You don't have that. You don't have the other thing. Why did you do this? How come you didn't do that? Why didn't you think of this? You know, well, I'm sorry. I just followed the playbook that every other mayor in the state of Minnesota follows. That's the same thing that's happened here, folks. You know, tear it apart. That's what we're here for. We're not here to build things up. We're here to tear things apart. That's what we're here for. So our community came back to us and they said, you know what? We want a local option sales tax. And we're going to do the work because we can. And we know that we have a vision for this city. If you don't have one, we have one. And so they did it. Thirteen years, we're going to get the projects. Okay? We can wait. We can tear it apart. We can say, this is wrong, that's wrong. I didn't have this information. I didn't have that information. I don't know what I'm doing. Okay? Fine. But that doesn't get us anyplace. Where did the $10 million come from? Where did the eight and a half million come from? I challenge you to go out and ask another mayor, any place that's built a city hall, and ask them, how did they do it? And you'll find that I did it the same way they did it. We have one difference. We've got people that want to tear it down and not build it up. And we're doing a good job of it. So let's go down that path. Let's put it on hold. And let's work on the local option sales tax projects. Go ahead.
I'll go. That's not acceptable. We're not putting it on hold. The citizens have said they want a community center. This is doable. We can do this. And I... And my thing is, I'm just trying to ask the rest of the council members, how do we bring you along? What information do you want that's palatable? That we can move forward with this? Not drag our feet? And I'm not talking... And I'm saying, doing it right. There's no timeline on doing things right that if you take more time, it's going to be better. The thing that I'm looking at is, that I learned from some of these projects coming along, is that when we don't get anything done for two or three or four or five years, every year, the cost goes up. And so I'm just trying to say, let's make decisions. If, instead of just saying, we don't have a decision on that or we didn't vote on that, then my thing is, then let's vote on it.
Exactly.
Then let's make a decision and move forward. This will happen. We will make it happen. We're not going to put this on hold.
Local option sales tax? Why it failed the first time? I have no idea. But the second time, this council added two projects to that that made it much more a community-wide piece. I would remind the council and the mayor that that happened. That's why it passed, in my opinion. And this time, asking questions of why something we all agreed at eight and a half has gone to 10, without any information of why it did, is not trying to tear it down. Perhaps I could get the answer to the question, because I have to answer to constituents who said, I thought it was at eight and a half million dollars. You had that as a holder. If I could say, it's because of inflationary costs because it wasn't built three years ago, that's fine. But to turn around and say, this council just tears everything apart, is an unfair assessment. And those kind of comments are not productive. And I'm going to call them out when I hear them from now on. Because it is not healthy. We are... I share all of your optimism. I just told you what I would need.
Yep.
I didn't think it was outlandish. Now, to have you prioritize all of the pieces that would go in a project perhaps is. But there was something that you saw when you toured, because I didn't get to do that. When you toured, what did you see that costs one and a half million dollars? Because I can sell that. But what I can't sell is it was an arbitrary number, because I don't believe it is. There has to be a reason for it. So help me help you.
Councilmember Osmus, you made a great statement in there about bring us along. That's part of, I think, what we're asking... What I was asking is to be brought along. However, I do think that there is a responsibility to know how you're going to pay for a $10 million building before you say you're just going to build one. And I think that that's a fair assessment for us. And coming from the task force, it's a responsibility to bring to the council to understand how we're going to do this. I don't know what's in the $10 million. And I heard enough to say that the architects will help us to decide that. But to tear us apart, saying we are trying to delay it, I think it's irresponsible to shove it forward without having an understanding of the financing of it and how it's going to be paid for, so we can sell this to our community. That's a responsibility that each of us at this table hold. And to do it right. And to do it futuristic, that's good for the city.
Again, I think we're getting the pieces coming to us starting in January, the financial piece. I don't think that's being circumvented. I think that's going to be very important. I believe it's going to be a global look. And then that's going to force us to make some real decisions. So to say that we don't... Maybe we don't know right now what the big picture is. We know there's a lot of projects. I understand that. But I'm... There's going to be a lot of responsibility with our city administrator and our finance director to present what we need and how we're going to finance it. And then we're going to have to move forward from there. But we have to take some baby steps. We have to trust our directors and administrator to present the information on a global timeline. So I think it's coming. I don't think we're bypassing that piece. I think we're going to know.
I think this is a great reason why we're having this meeting tonight. To get this information, to air it and to talk about what next steps are. And to entrust in our administrator. He's saying things will come in January. And what we do next and how we take the next steps. I think January is two days from now. I don't think we're pushing it down the road.
I can agree with Councilmember Muske. We added the community center and stormwater to make this project palatable to the voters. We did not vote for a city hall. I think a former administrator kind of talked about it. I mean, it's been talked about for years. And then you, Mr. Mayor, put in there $8 million for a city hall.
Eight and a half.
Okay, eight and a half. So that's our... I get the eight and a half and then $2 million for the community center. My problem is still, you know, I want to combine buildings to eliminate some costs, you know, heating, bathrooms, things like that. That's why city hall and the community center. But I think there could be some duplication yet with the event center and community center. Because they both want commercial kitchens. And I don't think we can afford it. So I'd like to see what... Where the duplication is on these new projects that we're planning. You know, you originally brought forward the Hardware Hank building. Honestly, that might be the way to go.
Mr. Fager, you were the one who was pushing for the community center.
I know.
All together.
I know.
And I thought you would be happy when that decision was made.
Yes, but I don't like that price tag.
I don't think any of us do.
Yeah. The auditorium and Hardware Hank can still be together, so you're sharing. We still have to heat the auditorium. We haven't talked about that either. We got to heat the Rack building downtown, Rack 8. We haven't talked about that. Oh, and are we going to sell the city hall? Or are we going to tear it down? We haven't talked about that either, so. There are questions out there.
Well, Mr. Gramm, I think you have some marching orders.
More information to come.
Okay, let's take a five-minute recess.
In essence, for another hour on that same information. Wouldn't it be more efficient just to present it to the city council? Because ultimately, that's the deciding group. You know, so you're repeating everything and it's eating up. It's eating up hours and hours of everyone's time. And, and I'm, I guess what I'm doing, I'm just asking if, if that's the process you like, then, you know, by all means, continue using it. But is there a better way? And, and I, I don't think, you know, we're gonna, you know, I'm gonna solve this. I don't think, you know, any decisions will be made. But I guess I'm just sitting here saying, uh, administration, my job is to make your guys' job easier, faster, efficient, effective. And I'm just seeing that we're basically duplicating the committee work at the council level. And I would think that it, when, once the recommendation comes forward to the council, that it would be one-tenth the amount of time spent on it than the committee did. Because, because, you know, the rest of the council would be saying, well, you guys have analyzed this, you've looked at all the options and you've recommended this option. Are there questions? Sure. But is there a way to, I don't know, make the city council meeting go faster? I mean, that's what I think the committee process is all about, is to, to help the city council get through the grunt work so that they don't have to spend four hours at a city council meeting. So I guess I'm just saying, what, what can we do that would make your guys' life easier? Should we, should we be, staff be given more information? You know, should, you know, you know, is, are we not giving enough information that is, you know, with your council packet that goes with the recommendation? Is there something missing that we can add so that we don't necessarily have to re-grind the coffee twice, kind of a thing? And, and I would think that the council would, would appreciate hour and a half council meetings instead of four hours. You know, I know four hours was, was one of the biggest ones, and there was reasons for it, and I understand that. But I use that as, just as an example, that, that I think that the committee process should help the council make decisions faster, not make it slower. And, and so I, I, I'm just looking to say, is, is there something we can do? Is there a process we can do better? Is there, is there an expectation that the minutes have to be read, word for word? Is there an expectation that the, that the recommendation has to be done, word for word? These are just my perspectives.
Yeah.
I just wanted, before we, before we start this discussion, um, some of you may be thinking, well, I didn't talk to Brian to talk about this. I did not. Brian brought this to me.
You're awful fast at trying to defend yourself.
Right. You're starting to learn why. But he brought this to me probably two months ago. He brought this concern to me. And I said, I'm all for building a better Malmstrup if we can. And I explained how we went through the work session process and how that really didn't work. I mean, I think we, you know, everybody sitting at the table at the time really felt that that was cumbersome and didn't work. And so I said, you know, maybe we need to talk about it at some point. So when we decided to have this, I had a council member call me and say, hey, how do I get an item on the agenda? I said, just ask. And so that's how simple it gets on air, is that you just ask. And so the committee structure discussion is here. So I'm just here to say that I'm not the proponent of pushing this forward, but I eagerly await the discussion because I, I have a lot of the same feelings and, you know, we talked about this before, so. Go ahead.
Okay. Who's going?
Sean.
Okay.
I agree with everything that you said. And I've had to be, I've been under both structures, first committees and workshops and back committees. I've always wanted to be able to just deal with action items on the committee reports. And information items, anybody can read those. So I would concur, I don't like to have the whole minutes read to me. I don't, uh, information items, I can read those too. Truly, the reason I'm bringing it back as a council person or as a chairperson is to get that information for a vote. So if we just had action items, I would be a happy person with that. I think that is the necessary work. But now, some of those might spin out because only half the people listen to it. Turn it up on a reason.
All right.
So I, um, there was probably different levels of trusting the council members and whatnot. But frankly, if we have to, if I'm only dealing with action items and there's a bunch of folks that have questions about that one action item, still, if I'm not going through all those informational only items in that piece, that still cleaves off a lot of time. So again, it's not perfect, it evolves, and that would be a piece that I would like to see.
When we, um, when we went to full council committee structure, I was a proponent of that because just going back to our community center conversation, everybody's getting the same information, um, at the same time, with the same slant, and I like that. So that nobody feels like they're not getting something and they can make better informed decisions. But I think when we say that that didn't work, I feel like there was a problem with the structure of the work sessions. As far as what you could, part of it was the structure and part of it was the information we got. Now going to the breakout of, of committee structure, you do definitely get more information at those meetings. And it just seems like it's easier to have conversations at those meetings than around a formal council table. I mean, I, I just think that's a fact. But the, the part about reading the minutes and going through some of that, I think that's a huge piece for the public. And, and the number of people who watch city council meetings and informing the public of what's going on. And I, and my personal feeling is that's important. And that's part of the reason why they watch the council meeting is to see what's going on and to be informed. And whether that's reading the council packet, because then we, because then I know we've said, well, they can, they can read that online if they want. That isn't what they want. People who watch and listen to council meetings want to be brought up to speed. So I don't have a problem with those getting repeated, and I know it takes time. But, um, other than having longer council meetings, because then it's a work session and the council meeting, I like that idea. But how you, how you get the same amount of information, I don't know. I, I feel like there's a lot of meetings, especially when it's a council week, and depending on what committee you're on, I kind of liked having my Mondays, that I knew my Mondays were going to be council activities. Now it's Monday, it's Wednesday, it's Thursday, um, and the, and that's, it's a lot of time. That's my two cents.
I think we had to go back to committee structures for different reasons. And I think there was a lack of trust, both at the council table and with how we were getting information, what we were getting and what we weren't getting. And I think that was difficult for, we're all to blame with that. I think we are getting things done in the committees. Do I like reading the minutes? No. But I will tell you, I think our minutes have been more embellished in the last couple of months because we have conversations in the committees about how we're going to defend the decisions that we make. And so that is, I think, an issue for us to come to terms with in that, if there's a way to summarize it, but I think we as council members have, have the same responsibility that we ask, what you ask of us. If you have a question, call and ask. Don't tear people apart at the council meeting. Don't tear it all apart there. If you have the opportunity and it's there, it means we need to do our homework. If there's a way that we can summarize this and still allow the public to understand what we're doing, but I think until there is full respect back here at this table and respect for our staff, we are going to continue to document and cross Ts and dot Is so that we aren't torn apart for the decisions that we make. And so I'm more than willing to change how we report back, but I do think our committee structure is working. And I think we've got some few, few more things to fix and to deal with before we can look at a different structure.
How do other communities do it?
There's a variety of different ways they do it. They do it through work sessions, they do it through committee reports. A lot of your, I mean, you have, you have a lot of cities where, I mean, they'll have a 20-minute city council meeting, and they're just doing, similar to what council member, or similar to what Sean said, that they'll just, you know, your, your, your action items, you, you address your action items, kind of, I really like the way that Brian has taken those action items at the top and said, this is what I want you to do. And then we kind of gave that direction, if that's what, you know, tell us what you want to do, tell us how we're gonna do it, and then we'll get it done. So I think that that's good. Some of them do the work sessions. You know, I think generally speaking, our meetings do not last overly long. The last one was pretty painful. I think we got out of here three minutes before we would have had adjourned. I mean, we, and just for people that may not understand, you can continue discussing the item that's on the floor at the time that you hit 11 o'clock, you just can't add a new item, is the way it is. So if you introduce something, you just, you, you complete that item, but you can't introduce anything new other than to just adjourn, unless the council as a whole agrees to not do that. But, I mean, when I started as mayor, I watched a lot of council meetings of different cities, just to see what other people were doing and how they were doing it. But, so.
There is, there are many communities, and, and I'll just say, you know, there's a lot of small communities. They have no committees, they have no work sessions. The staff puts the agenda together, maybe their police department delivers it, maybe it gets mailed, now it gets emailed, okay? All the council get it at the same time. You review the background information. If you have questions, you call staff, you come to your council meeting, it gets hashed out in, in, in that council meeting. And even then, uh, an hour to an hour and 15, going through a process where the councils only had their packet from the Friday to the Monday, or the Friday to the Tuesday, the council meetings only last about an hour, hour and 15. There's no committees, there's no work session, there's no nothing. Get your packet, everybody's treated equally, and, and, and it, and it works. Now, are there some, like on special assessment night, is that the long meeting, you know, or when you can put sidewalks in where there were no sidewalks? Yeah, those are long meetings, but they're very specific, you know? But a general council meeting, hour, hour 15. And, and I'm just sitting here looking at the time, your time and staff's time spent in the, the committee process. And then coming to the city council and almost like duplicating that whole process again. And it's just, that's a lot of man-hours. I don't want to say man, woman-hours, it's a lot of hours. And I'm not, I'm not promoting committees or promoting work sessions or promoting any particular thing. I'm just making an observation that, that there's a lot of time being spent. And if, if everybody is interested in what's going on, uh, you know, then, then bring it to the full council, you know, forget committees, forget work sessions, just bring it to the council. Everybody tunes in and watches, you know, their government at work. And everybody has an opportunity to ask questions and comment, the department heads are out, you know, always here anyway. So I, it's just, again, just an observation. If, if you, if, if some of you may be, you know, saying, yeah, we could, we could speed things up if we didn't do this, and, but some of you don't want to, that's, that's fine too. I'm just saying, I just see a lot of, a lot of work at the staff level, a lot of work at the council level that gets, you know, in essence duplicated. And I'm all for the, the public knowing what's going on, I'm all for that. But cities across Iowa, Wisconsin, and Minnesota can get that information cranked out in short amount of time. And for this process, for whatever reason, it takes, it takes a long time to go through this process. So I'm just wondering if, you know, if, if, if there's something that administration can do to help you? I'm more than willing to, you know, try to, you know, provide more information and, you know, our phone lines are always open during workdays if you have questions, you know, to, to speed up. But, and I also understand that sometimes you, you already know the answer to your question and you're making it for the public. You know, you're asking the question because there's people out in the public that want to know the answer to the question, and, and I understand that too. But it was just something that, you know, in casual conversation I've had with, you know, a few of the council members and the, and the mayor, and I'm just kind of going like, why do we talk about it if we don't, if we don't put it on a piece of paper and, have a discussion? You know, this seemed like a good time to do it.
I think, um, shared already, I think the action items is a good idea, but to a point you just made, because you're actually at all of the committee meetings, why does, I mean, I know the staff is here to answer questions, but when you've hashed it all out, most of the questions that the council is gonna ask, and at least it's been this case for me for labor issues, I know the answer, or you should know the answer. Maybe, maybe they don't have to come. I'm, because I think the committee structure is working, I think we're getting all the information we need, but maybe that's, you know, we've kind of shifted to where we're addressing you with most of those anyway. If you feel confident with most of the action items coming from a committee, don't dismiss the person that has had to present it already. I mean, because it's, they don't need to do it again. That'd be just, and I don't want to speak for all the other groups for, for labor, Samantha doesn't need to come here again unless it's an issue that I don't feel comfortable and you don't feel comfortable talking about, but you certainly could figure that out before you come.
Can I, can I pile on on that?
Yeah.
A minute? I think one thing that would help, and I mean, it was talked, it's been talked about different times through the years, is that if we did that, then if you have a question like Councilmember Nelson said, you could, you would ask that question because you would make sure the administrator was prepared to answer the question. But then, I like that idea because, I mean, we have our staff here, our staff are basically spending a couple hours watching us, they have better things to do than watch us, like bring their fiancee to.
Um, I would just say that the two committees that we go to, once in a while, Mr. Gromitz is at Public Works, but he's not usually at Finance because of the timeframe with that. So I, I hear what you're saying. I think it, once we create some stability in our, in our administration and system and we can come up with a better process, you know, I, I think it would be nice if the minutes were similar. I think right now, my observation would be that the four different committee structures, the minutes are very different. But I do think we've taken a defensive approach to our minutes to protect ourselves, and I think if we can get past, past being that way and work on civility at this table and to do the questions, ask the questions, not to play gotcha kind of feeling, I think that's what we're talking about in empowering the city administrator to be able to do some of that. I think there might be a better summary way to do some of those minutes than what I would say we experienced with Finance, so. But I know there's a reason why we've been doing them that way too, so.
Now, you've said it before, that Wilmer does things differently, and you came from New Ulm, they might do things differently there too. But what did they do down there that you're familiar with?
Uh, very similar to many other communities, and that just simply is the, the city manager prepares the agenda, approves, puts all the items in, into the agenda. You know, the council members may say, I'd like to put something on, you know, manager puts it on, and the packet goes out on Friday, and the, the meeting's on Tuesday. So they have all weekend to review. Everybody shows up at the council meeting and, you know, the finance director, the city engineer is present, the city manager, the community development director is usually there, and just go through the, go through the agenda. It's a more of a, a little bit different format than you would have, but it's more standard again, and that is you've got your beginning stuff, you've got your consent agenda, and then you've got your old business, things that you've talked about before, might be two or three of those things that are carryover from the prior meeting, and then you get your new business, and it's, go down the list and, you know, you get to the end of the meeting. And so it's not, because they don't have the committee system, but they do have Park and Rack, you know, and they do have the planning commission, and they do have, you know, same organizations that, that you have, and they go directly to the city council. I mean, the community development director, the planner, brings the planning commission stuff, you know, puts it on the agenda, gives it to the administrative staff, they just insert it, manager reviews it, you know, before it goes out. And, uh, there's no pre-discussion, there's no work session, there's no committee, uh, to, you know, make a recommendation from the council, it's a recommendation from the city manager. And in this case, it'd be the city administrator.
So do they table a lot of things then and wait for a week? If something comes up that the community is interested in and they have concerns, you're just gonna vote on it without discussion or?
I, you know, in, in one year, if there was, you know, one, two things that got tabled until the following meeting, it'd be because maybe they didn't have enough information and the person that had it wasn't at the meeting, and they'd just say, well, you know, let's pick this up at the next meeting, they table it and they, they just move on. But everything is handled in relatively quick fashion. Now, you know, it's the same information you're getting. I mean, the, the, the action sheet that you get, or issue sheet as I call them, you know, basically says, here's what the recommendation is, here's the financial, here's the legal, here's the back history, here's the, you know, all the stuff that you get. It's just that the, in those communities that do this process, they just look at their agenda and come to the city council meeting and make decisions.
Does New Ulm not charge?
Vicki first.
Yeah, well, I just wanted to say, you know, being on Labor, I know we've had a few closed sessions, and we have attorney there, then he comes here and we have another closed session. And sometimes the people not on that committee are a little peeved because they didn't hear about this until they got it in their packet. Or last time we talked about the shelter and information was brought forward to us, and it was kind of like, well, we already, we already know all of this, you know? When, once someone asked a question, and then someone on the committee was like, well, we already talked about all of this at our committee meeting. So then half of us don't know what's going on, the other half do. Kind of like with City Hall tonight, you know, where a good chunk are left out of the discussion, and then we all have to be brought up to speed. So we're talking about everything twice, in a way.
I was just simply gonna ask about, is New Ulm a charter city, or is it is? And so they don't have committees and things defined in the charter, I would assume?
Right.
Standing committees and that kind of thing?
Yep.
Thank you. When we started out, I remember being on, we had the work session and everything was supposed to be put out there, but we weren't getting the information that we wanted. It didn't seem like, I didn't believe that we got everything we, we needed from whomever. It was kind of abbreviated, or certain things were put off, or we didn't hear about, it didn't come all out there, you know? So, but once we went to the committees, we, we get all kinds of information from the directors or whoever, we can ask the questions, and, and, and then we can make our decisions in our groups. I think one of the things that's been taking a lot of our time, like in, in Labor, we've been going through the policy, and that's a big chunk to bring up to the council and go through, and, and, and that takes time. I think that's done for us. And I, I know that some of the other committees will start bringing their stuff up to date, and that's gonna take time, but once that's done, it should be fine. But the other thing that I remember being told that, you know, once you go to the committees, it's more personal and you'll have more people from the community coming to the meetings, I haven't seen that. I haven't seen that. Honestly, I've, I've been, you know, whenever we have the open mic, so to speak, there's nobody from the community to make a comment. And, but I don't, you know, in a perfect world, I would love to be on the same page as everybody else all at once, but we weren't getting the information that I believe we should all get, for whatever reason, I don't know. So that's, that's changed with the, the committee, where we get more of that information. And then, like Julie said, we want to share what we know with this, with the community. That's why they're watching this. They want to know what's going on. They want to hear from the players, you know? And, you know, and I guess, you know, we're the, we're the counselors and they want to hear our thoughts, and, yeah, it takes time, it takes time. I, I don't feel like anybody has animosity towards me on the council, I don't, I don't feel that. I like my council members, I like who you are. We don't have to agree, we can agree to disagree, but you know what? If I have a birthday, I'm gonna guess that they're gonna wish me happy birthday, you know? So, you know, I, I think that, I think deep down, they're, they're good people, they're kind people, and, and we're gonna get through this. But, uh, maybe I'm naive, and I guess I will be naive, so. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't get your birthday present. But I will say, just being in the committee structure before, because I was on Labor before, no one came and talked to us then either. So it's not, those were empty promises of people showing, but I think it matters on what is on your agenda brings people. Nobody's gonna come because we've been talking about the policy manual for so long. But on other committees, if it's something that people have an issue with, they will show up on a committee structure, I think. I don't know what's going on in some of the other committees, but don't feel badly that they're not coming for Labor because they didn't come before.
Yeah, I, I think that's across the board. The only, to me, is any of the other committees, the only time somebody showed up, it would be like the alcohol violations. So it's a matter of whether they can, they have to go to a committee, or they have to go on, on Rack Eight in front of the public because of their, their liquor violation. To me, as far as public coming, that to me hasn't been a part of the input, but what Fernando was referring to, and whether that's the staff or the, the directors of certain, we are getting, you do get more information at the committee meetings. And, and it is more comfortable to talk, it's more laid back.
That was gonna be my point, is when we went, we tried to basically take the committee structure and put it into a work session, thinking we'd get all of that information, but frankly, those committee meetings go an hour, and to get all four of them in on a work session would have been impossible, that'd be four hours of information, and it would be actually the opposite of what you're talking about. So I, I think we are a little handcuffed by history of what government is in Wilmer and defined by charter. So again, I would suggest that perhaps by having staff come to all the committee meetings that, you know, if you wished to take the heat off of the staff that, you know, if you wished to take the heat off of the staff from coming and saving their time, uh, if you feel confident in answering the questions, I would say, I would totally let them go. Unless there's an issue, you, you talk to the chairperson of that committee. If there's an issue that they say, well, I anticipate this question or council members, when they look at their packet, have that question, forward it, that maybe, you know, the finance director needs to come. But otherwise, I, often I see my HR director in the back and I'm like, Samantha, you wanna talk about something? Cause I see you're here, um, and she's like, I'm here, but you know, if you can do it, just do it. And she should probably be able to go.
It'd make for a smoother meeting too, if you didn't know where you're going. I mean, you'd always go to the chair and you'd always go to the administrator. I mean, it would make the meetings run smoother as a facilitator of the meeting.
But I can also see, I'm, I, I think where some of the issue came up, where we got to where we are, is that people felt that the city administrator was, had too much power. And I think after, after Mick Schmidt was in that position for so many years, that, you're looking at me like I'm got two heads. No.
You have to explain more.
Okay, um, he, he ran the council meetings. I mean, he truly, he, cause he had a clear understanding of everything that was going on. And my perception was in every, and that was a given because he'd been there for 20 years plus. That's how things kind of ran. Then when there was a change in city administrators, I think we had a power struggle. And that the city council, um, wanted to take the strong council power back. And, uh, and I think try to control the, the, what, the, the control that the city administrator had. And that was part of our battle and that was part of our, our problem with keeping city administrators. And I think we've come full circle. I think, I think we have, we've, we've come to a point of, of working through things and trust and understanding. The only thing, as far as the committee structure thing, and, cause I kinda get what you're saying, is that they've hashed it out for two or three hours, but I'm still, that, that still isn't, if I'm not on that committee, I don't know what got hashed out. And I'm not quite, I'm, I'm, and I know that wasn't what you were suggesting, is that when it gets to this level, that we just, that we just say yes, because that was their recommendation. I know that wasn't the, the, the assumption. So I'm always gonna have more questions. If, and again, I would want other questions from other people so that we didn't, maybe we didn't, maybe we had group think going on in our committee meeting and we need some other perspective and somebody else to ask a different question that didn't get asked. Maybe it takes too long. And how we do that, I don't know.
You know, I'm gonna go to something that Nikki said a little earlier. You know, when Fernando said at the last meeting, we discussed this at length at our meeting. It was like the concerns I had were gone because I knew it had been talked about. I was just thinking that we were getting something from a vendor, kind of like we got you here because I remember them standing in front of us saying, you can have any color roof you want. I mean, that's what we were told, we could have any color roof we want. We weren't told it was gonna be a change order, but once you said that and you said, hey, we talked about this at length, it's like, okay, well, this has already been chewed up and spit out. I mean, I told you that, that this morning when, when I visited with you about this issue. You know, I think at the council, I mean, so if you've had something in, in your committee meeting and you beat it to death, tell us that right up front, just say, hey, we beat this thing to death and we're bringing this recommendation. Because then, then we probably don't have to beat it to death because we know it already was. I still think Julie's right, that you're gonna still have questions, but, you know, you're gonna know that it was discussed. Sometimes you think you just, it just comes on the agenda and you just think, boy, we just slide it through, but.
I wasn't on the council when Mick Schmidt was, was the administrator, but I would imagine a perception of someone watching their council meeting for the first time with a system where the staff was not here, would think that this man knows all the answers. However, we all know that the committees, they're the ones that did all of the legwork to do that. So I don't know how that worked before, but under this kind of a system that I'm familiar with, I, that, that staff person basically brought this, did all the explanation and they can take the night off because they've already done the legwork. And if we were good, good committee members, there should be four of us that should be able to answer anybody else's questions. And if we can't, the city administrator should. And I can see where that perception, if that's what you watched, it would look like, yeah, he knows everything. But in the beginning, he may not have known much of anything, he let all the staff do it. If he's doing his job the right way.
So the other thing I wanna bring up.
Positive thing, not negative.
So the other thing I wanna bring up and just remind us is, so this is the fourth administrator that we've had since Mick has left. Every administrator has recommended what he's recommended.
What, what?
Uh, that the way that we're running our meetings is, there's ways to do it faster. There's ways to do it more efficiently. And I didn't hear him say, I don't want discussion. He didn't say that and none of us heard that. What he said is that I think there's a way that you can be more efficient with your time and with our staff time to do the job in a, in a, in a methodical process that's open and transparent to, to the public. I mean, so when he brought this up to me, the, originally the first time, I said, as long as we keep that open, transparent process, you know, I'm open to do anything. I mean, it's fairly easy to sit and run the meeting. Um, it's a lot easier if I know we're gonna have six things under this and we're gonna have four things under this and two things under this. Now, I think where we sometimes get wrapped around the axle a little bit is when we get into the discussion on the non, um, things we don't have to vote on, the information items. And I think that's sometimes where we get wrapped around the axle because we maybe haven't, at a committee level, properly vetted it. And so, I mean, for the facilitator of the meeting, what would make it easier for me is what we've already done. This is what I want you to do, this is why I want you to do it. And here's the background if you wanna read it. That would, that's good. So I think, I think we're, I think we're spot on on how we're doing our, our minutes, um, that way. But I think if we would just say, uh, when we gave the report, you know, we've discussed this at length and this is our recommendation based on the information we received, there may be some follow-up question that comes to it, but, you know, there's four of you at the meeting and, and there might be one question you didn't ask, but if you had that question, you should have asked the administrator before. And I like the idea of not having staff show up. I'm not sure about the chief, the police chief though.
I, I don't know that all staff have to show up for every meeting, but I do think even when, if you think of the discussions we've been having at Public Works regarding snow, et cetera, it's been empowering for our staff to, I mean, there's a lot to learn with some of that and I think to hear from our staff on those subjects of what they're working on is important for our public too. So I think there has to be some discretion with when staff is here and when they're not. Cause I do think that they can do some explanation, whether it's streets or whether it's, you know, those types of things. I think it is important for our department heads to be communicating with our community too, so.
Is it ever beneficial for the department heads to hear how the council meeting went? For when, for the discussions of the things that come back to them on a Tuesday? After a Monday night council meeting to go, why did that go sideways? If they weren't here?
It should never go sideways. No, I mean, you know.
It does.
It's, it's, it's always beneficial for somebody who, you know, works in the public works area to understand which direction the council went and why they went that direction. Uh, very helpful, you know? Uh, so I, on, on one hand, I sit back and, 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 you know, I would have department heads here. There, there's no question about that because I don't know everything about engineering and I don't know everything about law enforcement, I don't know everything, you know, about even the city clerk's position, you know? Uh, I'm a generalist, I know a lot about everything, but not real specific. So anytime you have a city administrator that's in, in here for a while, the ability to release a department head from attending the meeting is always present. You know, even being here six months, I don't feel as strong as I would if I was here for two years to be able to sit there and say, oh yeah, I know what you're talking about. I mean, even the names of the, the stormwater projects, I have, you know, realistically, they're names on a piece of paper and they're projects, but I don't have that location in my mind. I, I, I couldn't drive to Kennedy School right now, okay? So yes, even I still need to have the department heads here, but yet there's sometimes, uh, you know, I'll just say, no, I've got this, you don't, you know, if you've got to, something to do tonight, go ahead and, go ahead and do it. I'll, you know, I'll answer whatever questions I have. So, I mean, I have the flexibility to do that now, so that's, that's, that's fine. I guess I'm just, you know, was, was just kinda raising this, you know, we're here for, you know, to talk about, uh, things and, and if we can do something, uh, better, you know, that maybe we can get one tip out of the, the discussion tonight and say, okay, we can implement that little piece and maybe make things, um, go smoother and, and faster.
Is there, uh, do you have a, a plan in place or would you have a plan in place or a recommendation in place on the consistency and how the minutes are written?
I, um, I don't have anything on that, to be totally honest. You know, and just in listening to the, the department heads, um, I know there's some that, that are really in tune to detail in their minutes. And there's others that are saying, I'm making this vague so the person who has to read this doesn't have to read it for 20 minutes, you know? So some are attempting to try and reduce the, um, time. I mean, the information's there, but you know, you don't have to put in every word that it was said in the entire finance meeting, you know? You can summarize. And I think, uh, some are summarizing and some are being very detailed. And so there's really no uniformity right at this point in time. But I think, you know, that would be driven by the city council. You know, if you said, have them summarize, you know, the key points of what, what the decision was all about. But when you get to the, that Fernando said this and Vicki said that, that might be a little too much detail, you know? Discussion was had on these three things. You know, I, I think there's ways of doing it and I think it's just working with the, the minute takers of the, the, the committees to become more uniform.
Is there a desire to do that for the council?
I've been very happy with labor. I don't know where we are on that spectrum, but.
Well, you give the short one.
Who, who takes your minutes?
She writes the stuff down.
So the, the department head does the minutes?
And then she throws them to me and I look at them and I usually, if she's put too much minutia, I'll make it general and back at to her and that's kinda how our process goes. And I don't think I've been reading our minutes. I've, I've been focusing on, I tried to anyway, cause you all can read, but the point of the public maybe listening for that, that, that point's not lost on me. But I don't know if, if an information piece we're asking for, I know I'm coughing all the time. I don't think it, for me, if I say, you know, we're needing this additional information for the labor committee, that's not something you all need to hear, cause I, we still are needing more information. So to share that with you, that we asked this and it's coming, doesn't seem like something you really need to know until it's coming to you. But if it's some piece of information that would be relevant for everybody because it's just good information, like mowing in and things like this, then I think you can share that, that makes sense. But if it's, if it's something like the labor committee's waiting to hear from X, Y, or Z, well, I'll let you know when we hear from X, Y, or Z. So I think we might overshare, but.
Someplace there should be a happy medium though, because if you have to go back and look for an item in the minutes, the minutes should have enough information for you to know what went on at the meeting without having to go back to listen to the meeting. But I think there could be a, the minutes could still be, stand on their own, just how a report from the minutes could be a different version too, so.
Well, one of the things that when we went back to committee structure, we said that we were gonna encourage people to have more of a conversational style of reporting out. And maybe we just need to have that in our mind of do that again, but if there's still consensus on that. But maybe there's something that maybe you can talk to the department directors about that chair those and see if there's a, a way that we can, you know, I don't know, I think we wanna bullet point them, do we? Anybody wanna bullet pointed? I mean, that's too formal, my opinion, whatever. Fernando.
Thank you. Um, uh, I was just gonna say, um, you asked for a suggestion. You know, I'm thinking that maybe, um, our chair people might need some training. Sean seems to understand that, hey, you know, we just have to hit the, the action points, you know? And maybe, um, we have to talk about it and say, hey, you know, this information is, you know, we can maybe just brush it or whatever, I don't know the term you would use or, but this is, this is the, just educate our chair people to say, hey, why don't we just hit the, tonight, we're just gonna hit the action items and just move on through there. And like Marv says, it's gonna be a conversation. You don't have to, um, read every word from the, you know? And I, and, you know, so I think it's the education. I think Marv has been good about educating us on how the process and certain things work, on resolutions and stuff like that. And it's, it's just an education piece and it's being informed and, and then doing it, I think, so.
Just a question, I'm not, and I'm not challenging you.
No.
But help me with this, because I wanna hear what you think about it, is how do you address the concern that the public is using the meeting for their sole source of information? Cause that is what I'm struggling with, cause I'm right where you are, but that's a very valid concern.
That's real. And I, that's the hard part because, um, that's the transparency part and that's the informational part. And, and, um, I, I read my minutes and I read the agendas and all of that and there's a lot to it. And I think the public, they don't have the time or the desire. That's why they've elected us to do that. So, um, that's, that's a real question. And I don't have a, I don't have a, an answer, succinct answer to say, oh, just because. I don't have that, I don't know. But that Julie brought it up, you brought it up and that's, is the hard balance.
Cause I mean, and, and we, we post all of our meetings, you know, and they can go see the minutes and they can see the agendas and are the recordings readily available? I mean, so people can go and do that, but that took an hour of someone's life to sit through the meeting, let alone to now be interested enough to sit down and listen to that and take an hour out of their lives to do. Where if I were to do those comments in minutes when I'm talking about those things, then they wouldn't have to do that. But there has to be a happy medium of, of just sharing the major points of those pieces and moving on. Because they don't need to hear the, the full 40-minute discussion. So I don't know how.
And I, in all fairness, I mean, I don't think that's what's happening. I mean, when, when the, when the, when the chairs, committee chairs are reading the minutes, that's not taking 40 minutes. They're, they're just, they're doing the recap of what happened at the meetings. Then we get buried in the questions.
And I think that's where we can do a better job of, you know, I remember, you know, on the first committee process, you know, after a lengthy discussion, the recommendation was, remember how they used to be written that way? Um, I, I was just thinking that that might be something that might be helpful. I was just trying to help us so that we didn't get wrapped around the action.
But does every committee chair get the minutes to review before they go in the packets?
Most of the time, most of the time.
Okay.
But, um, in defense of the committee structure, we don't make a motion and vote on it until we've had the lengthy discussion or we've had the discussion to bring it to the council. So if, and, and we've had that conversation in finance too, it's like, are we ready to support this? Are you ready to carry this forward? And so we've had the discussion and isn't just like we didn't, you know, that there were, so if there's still questions. beyond that, with that, I think, I think we are trying to do our due diligence at the committee structure, to be ready to support the, you know, that the committee is bringing forth this recommendation to the council. And if there needs to be a reason as why we're bringing it forward, you know, that's a different thing than, yeah, we, we've had lots of conversations, but we just don't make the motion and approve it until we've agreed to it too. So it's, I think it's a little subjective too. So.
Additional discussion.
I'm just curious, what, when you said you wanted to bring this forward, what did you, what, what outcome did you think would come of it? What, what were you thinking you were recommending?
I don't think I was recommending to change the committee structure. You know, that was not something I was looking to do. I think I was, I was looking for post-committee. So that's council action. And, and I think, you know, the comment earlier is that, yeah, it's not the motion. It's almost like some of the side discussion on the motion, which eats up 20 minutes, you know. So, so from my perspective, I think the, the reading of the minutes of the committee could be summarized, rather than word for word. Because it is in print someplace. It's electronically there. And if, if, if a resident wants a copy of it, we'll, we'll give them a copy of it, you know. So access to the information is always there. So summarizing, dealing just with the action items, as compared to getting into a tangent on something we discussed, and then 35 minutes later, we come back and, you know, get back to the action items. I think, just being that more efficient, what the committee is bringing forward are these action items, and, and the, the summarizing of, of how we got there. But most of that summary should realistically be on that action item. You know, it, it won't be in the minutes kind of thing, but it, it tells you what the issues, what the issues are, the information behind it, and all that good stuff. So I'm just looking at it and just trying to say, how do we make the council meetings more efficient? And I would just say, you know, the, the summary and dealing with the recommended action items, because that's what's before you. And when you go off on informational items, then that could be an hour, you know. Because some of those things lead to, A leads to B, and B leads to C, and, and pretty soon, you know, a lot of time is, is gone. And you end up with, whether it's two and a half, or three hours, or four hours, is immaterial. The point is, if you just did the action items, it probably would have been an hour and a half. So that, that's what, I guess, from the committee up to the city council, there, there seems, as, as was stated here, there's four people that know what's going on, and there's four people that don't. How, how do we get the four people on board, you know, so we don't have to rehash why we did what we did, you know, in the committee level. So that's all, I guess I was trying to, you know, think of, how, how would, how does one do that? The minutes are in your agenda packet. The more specific they are, might help you understand what they did. That's, that's the plus side of it. But then do we have to read them word for word when we get into council meeting? I think the summary is perfectly adequate than to say, we all had an opportunity to read the minutes of the finance committee, so you know what we talked about. For the public, here's a summary of what we talked about. So I, I think it was just, it's not a big change. It's just more of a focused approach to looking at the items on the, the agenda, and, and just, you know, moving forward, going through them. But then again, you know, we spent quite a bit of tonight, you know, just talking about a lot of good things, you know.
Kind of like retreat stuff.
So I was debating this, whether or not to bring this up or not. But I'm going to, seeing we're this deep in the rabbit hole. So I've had, I've, I've asked a number of different mayors to watch our meetings. And I say, watch our meetings and give me feedback. Tell me, you know, what can I do better? How could I handle the meeting better? You know, because the only way you're going to improve is if you actually get that feedback to, to hear that. And sometimes they're pretty painful conversations to have. But generally speaking, they're very thorough. But one of the things that a couple of them have told me is, they said, what you should do is you should, if, on the subject matter, you should only allow each council member to speak once. And, I mean, I think probably the record is probably 10 or 11 times that a council member's spoken to one issue. Predominantly, it's just one time. But sometimes you'll see me with my notepad over here. I think you see me with my notepad over here a lot. And that's the feedback I've gotten from other mayors that I've asked to look at our meetings, and how can we do our meetings better? And so, so that would be one thing. But that would be a dramatic change from anything we've ever done. We have never done that in this city. I'm not so sure that I want to go there. Because when Vicki brings up something that makes Fernando think of something else, that makes Rick think of something else, that makes Audrey think of something else, you, you understand what I'm saying. So, but that might be something too, is think out your question that you have, or think out your comment that you have, rather than just because, because Sean talked, Vicki's going to talk, just because Sean talked. So, so I think there might be some value with that too.
It's dangerous following that comment, of course. But I will-
Well, that wasn't why I-
No, but I'm saying, you know, I'll echo what Fernando said first. You know, well, I like everybody on this council. I feel like I can have a conversation with everybody on this council. But everybody in this council can do the same. We are all, we are, we're talkers. That's how you got probably where you are. And so you have a voice and you share it. And that's great. I think it, it's happened many times, and this is a kudos to a, a thing you're doing, and I would encourage you to do it more. Is when we're talking, you say, because I can hear you in my earhead, do you have anything new to add to the debate?
New information.
And if you don't, you don't say this, but then, if you don't, shh, be quiet. Because I think that is, once I hear that, I know, we've, we've beaten that dog down to where all the mayors have been saying, if you've, if you have something new, that's great. Because I think everybody, they talk, and we share stuff. And that's, that's a skillset we all have. So I wouldn't want to stop your voice. But when we're just repeating the same things over and over again, when the chair says, hey, anything new?
It's because it's important. No.
And that's some of the times I've been criticized, is why, you know, I cut so-and-so off, or I cut the other person off. And, I mean, I don't try to do it. I mean, I, I try to be, to be honest with you, I'm looking at the numbers. And when we get to about 20 over here, is about the time I'm starting to say, okay, start looking for new information, you know. And I'm not saying 20 from one person, I'm saying collectively. But, but I think this is, I was not looking forward to tonight, but I think we had a very good retreat. I think we talked about some good things that have to be talked about. And, you know, I tried to do the best again, folks, but I'm human. And I make mistakes. And I probably shouldn't have said it when I said earlier, but I'll apologize to all of you for it, for having said it. But I want what's best for this community. We've all made tremendous sacrifices to be where we're at. But we're all driven on what we want to get done too. So I think that's sometimes why we get a little more passionate than we should. So. Anybody else have anything good for the order? Okay, we're adjourned.